So, we're going to go ahead and get started and hopefully that will be the impetus for others to join us at the table. Mr. Duran, I understand you'll be starting off this session.
Well, I wanted to go over the outcomes of today, so I thought everyone here, though, well. All right, well, good afternoon. We'll go ahead and get started with our Phase 1, which is, and that's a really important part. I want to make sure we're all clear that we know that this is just the beginning of this very, very important and long conversation that we're having as it relates to some of the discipline concerns and issues that we have raised. And tonight is Phase 1. So, we have four outcomes, and I want to make sure that we're clear on what those are so that will help manage our expectations and yours as well, so that we can be clear in terms of the time that we have ahead of us. So, our first outcome tonight is we want to review the SRO, MOU, and the SRNR crosswalk and the recommendations. And there's a document that's attached as an actual crosswalk that Teresa Johnson and Mary Ann Panarelli will reference in a moment. The second part of tonight, after they do that, is to really make sure that the board is clear and provides us any feedback on the phases that we have currently planned for the work as we dig deeper into our discipline data. Tonight, Phase 1, which is primarily focused on ORC's study of the student behavior and discipline as it relates to the hearings office, as well as a little bit of data that they all provided in an attachment. We don't plan on getting into a lot of the data beyond the hearings office data because that data is part of Phase 2 and then ultimately Phase 3. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that means in a moment. And then last, to get some consensus and discuss the superintendent's recommendations for Phase 1. And all of that is related to the $100,000 that was set aside at the budget time last year and what we should use those funds for. That's solely what the recommendations will be. Not what recommendations will be to address discipline overall. That's coming in our June report. So, that's just to kind of chunk that out and will remind us as we go through the presentation tonight. So, with me is Teresa Johnson, Mary Ann Panarelli, Leedy, who's been up here for the last presentation, and also we have one principal with us from Madison, Greg Hood, who will be available to answer some questions that you may have after we present both parts. We are going to present both parts, the first part, which is the crosswalk, the second, which is Phase 1, and then we'll open it up for questions. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Teresa Johnson.
Madam Chair, could I ask a procedural question? One of the outcomes you are seeking is a board to have a discussion on superintendent's phase on recommendations, which include use of $100,000.
Correct.
You want us to make those decisions tonight, is that?
Correct. Get some consensus on that, yes, sir. And that's the last slide of the presentation that outlines what those recommendations are. Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
So, for the purpose of our presentation, as Dr. Duran said, the crosswalk is, we have it, we can post it, pull it up as needed. It's already posted on our board docs. What we've done for the presentation is really condensed and hit the highlights of the slides. You'll see the current SRNR language will appear in black up here on the slides. There are six proposed changes, four deletions of current language, which will appear with a strike-through, and then followed by a recommended language in red. In two sections, the issues had not previously been addressed, and we have indicated the recommended language in red also. And we've abbreviated the passages, and the longer passages again are noted in the crosswalk. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Panarelli.
Okay, so I'm going to go through these relatively quickly. So, in the first one, previously, it said that the role of the SRO was an active member of the school administration. The MOU changes that and says that their primary role is as a law enforcement officer and that although they help coordinate day-to-day with FCPS staff, they are not school administrators. So, that was that one. The next one, this was not in the SRNR at all. This is a statement that says that the SRO should not be involved in enforcement of school rules or disciplinary infractions that are not violations of law. So, that again was taken from the SRO MOU language. The next one, what you see in black, and I included this because I wanted people to remember that we had already put some limits around when an SRO could be involved in the questioning of the students. So, the information that you see in black is in the current SRNR. We are adding for clarity, and this did not come from the MOU but from our administrators, that there was some confusion when a police officer did become involved and needed to talk to students, how long we should then wait before we proceeded with the rest of the discipline investigation. So, this clarifies that the police officer would have the opportunity to first do interviews before the principal did interviews with students in certain situations when there had been a violation of law or it was suspected. But that as soon as those interviews were completed, it is incumbent upon the administrator to then interview and continue on with the disciplinary investigation. If you think about this in terms of some of the harassment cases we have had, principals were unsure if there was, say, a sexual assault, whether they should just wait until that was all the way through its entire legal process before going forward with discipline and know they need to, after the interviews are done by the police, they then need to go forward with the discipline process. This slide is put here, really, I'm not going to read it. This is what is in the current SRNR about the expectation for administrators to notify parents when there is an infraction that is of a serious nature, that is a disciplinary infraction. And as you will recall, those of you who were on the board at the time, it basically says that before a student is asked to write a statement for a situation that is likely to go to the hearings office, that as soon as practicable, the parent should be tried to be contacted. So, that is the information that is already in the SRNR. What would be the change would be when a police officer is going to speak to the student. So, basically, it outlines what the exigent circumstances are, and again, this was taken directly from the SRO MOU, and then says that it is, so it is the responsibility of the administrator to notify the parents that they are contacting the police. It is the responsibility of the police to notify the parents and get permission before they talk to the student and, you know, all the Mirandaizing and all of those kinds of things, because then we've entered into a legal arena. In terms of searches, this again is from the SRO MOU and clarifies that the SRO shall use probable cause before doing a search, and a search warrant may have to be obtained. Searches should be reasonable in scope. Searches should occur outside the presence of students and school staff, with the exception of school administrators, unless there is a clear and immediate danger to physical safety. So, they shouldn't be searching right in front of other kids, is the idea. And that the SRO should not be involved in administrative searches. In other words, if the principal feels that they need to search a locker for an administrative reason, the SRO should not be involved in that, and the SRO should not ask the administrator to do a search that the SRO wants to do. So, again, it just clarifies the lines a little bit more clearly about what the administrator can do and what the SRO can do. This language again came directly from the SRO MOU. So, I think we'll move on. Oops.
Before we continue, I think everybody knows who is sitting at the front of the table, but it might be helpful, I know Greg Hood, who's the principal of Madison, is a newcomer to the table today, so just wanted to let people know the case. Thank you.
Okay, so the second part of tonight, the second outcome, is to begin to talk about Phase 1 of the discipline study that we're engaged in. And as a reminder in the background, oops, went too far, we are looking at and digging deeper into our discipline practices for two reasons. One, it was a part of our equity plan that we talked about this past February, March. And second, it was also connected to, and that's what tonight has kind of honed in a little bit, the follow-on budget amendments that were passed by, that were proposed by Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Hines, and then supported by the full board. I won't read that to you, but just as a reminder of the background. And so, tonight, what we're going to be doing in Phase 1 is where ORC was asked as a part of that to do a study on the hearings office and some discipline data, as well as thinking about what might the needs be for supporting ways to reduce disproportionality of our discipline, and then provide some recommendations on what to do with the $100,000 that was in the budget because it was set aside. Also, following on, which was something that Ms. Hines had proposed in her amendment, was to have a deeper, more thorough, comprehensive look at our discipline practices, come to you in January, which we'll be calling Phase 2, to talk to you about what is that study going to look like. There was also a request to have an external review done simultaneously with an internal review by ORC. So, in January, when we come back, the focus of our meeting around this particular piece will be to share with you our best thinking about what we're looking into and make sure that we're not leaving out something you would like us to dig deeper into. Make sure we're touching all of the areas that you want answered as it relates to discipline practices and the disproportionality that we have, that we do see and that we do know exists. And then the Phase 3 part of the work will be coming back in June with a very full, comprehensive report and analysis, along with recommendations on what we can do to reduce some of what we're seeing. So, tonight, you will see that there is an attached report as it relates to Phase 1. It does not have all the analysis that you might want or expect because it is Phase 1. It is a lot of data that we've collected thus far. Please know that's not the end. We will have that deeper analysis with recommendations in June. So, having said that, what we want to focus on a little bit tonight is the ORC Phase 1 study, and then ultimately end with Dr. Ray Brand sharing his recommendation and getting your consensus on that, and then answering any questions you might have. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Leedy.
So, as Dr. Duran said, this is a pretty quick look at discipline. The report that he referenced has more information, but the focus of what I'm going to be talking about today is really around the hearings office, and I'll reference some of the other information that's in that report as well. And we conducted this report primarily to support the superintendent's decision-making about that recommendation that you asked for and that he'll be talking about later. So, this first graph is a look at what percentage of our students are referred to the hearings office. And you can see that it is approximately 0.2% of our student population who are referred each year, and this is, we're not talking 1% of the population or even half of 1%, it's about 0.2%, 0.2%. And you can see that it ranges from around 300 or so to a little bit over 450, and there has been a slight uptick in those referrals over the last three years. This next slide digs into hearings office cases. And again, when you look at the yellow line here, when you track back over the last dozen or so years, you'll see the same kind of uptick in the number of cases that have come to the hearings office in the last several years. The lines below that are not the overall hearings cases, but rather what an individual hearings officer is dealing with on an annual basis in the hearings office. And again, if you recall, the set aside was around whether or not an additional hearings office position should be added. And so, this was taking a look at what is the typical caseload for a specific assistant hearings officer. But there's an administrative hearings officer that handles some of the cases, probably about a third of what an assistant hearings officer handles. And so, this was taking a look at whether there was a need for an additional hearings officer position.
Good clarification question. The previous slide said that there was between 200 and 450, but this is 800. Are they talking multiple incidents per student?
Yes, so this first slide is the number of students, and some of these students are coming back to the hearings office multiple times. And this slide shows the overall number of cases. It also includes cases of students who are coming back for reassignment, so that is a case that the hearings office has to deal with, but it's not a student who's been referred to the hearings office. So, that would be another place where there's a discrepancy between students being involved and being referred to the hearings office versus the number of cases. So, when you take a look at this chart, the two lines represent what the typical hearings officer is dealing with. And you'll see that the green line is what has been assigned over the last dozen or so years to hearings officers. Hearings officers here in FCPS are often assigned cases together, so you'll have a primary hearings officer or a lead person, as well as a support hearings officer or a second hearings officer. So, that's the green line. And then the line below that, which is blue, is when you only look at the lead roles. And we'll come back to that notion. The other thing on this graph is there is a gray shaded area, and that gray shaded area is indicative of what we expect to be a reasonable caseload. And when ORC talked with some comparison school divisions to find out what it is that they were doing in their hearings offices or when they were handling hearings, and we looked at typical caseloads, and then we also talked with the administrative hearings officer here in FCPS, this was the range in which a typical caseload was considered reasonable. So, you'll see that both the green line and the blue line are within that range or even sometimes below that range, and that that continues to be the case even in the last several years as the number of hearings cases have gone up. So, our conclusion was that the caseload for our hearings officer is reasonable, given what they are currently handling. We also went ahead and talked with principals about what kind of support needs they might have, and the focus group we conducted with high school principals in particular indicated that they felt that there was decreased access to hearings officers to answer some of their urgent questions. And so, there did seem to be a need that was not being met, and in part because the hearings office had hearings officers going to hearings rather than available to answer principal questions. The other thing that we found, because we had talked with other school divisions that were comparable, these were either other large school divisions in the nation or school divisions in Virginia, that many of those practices that were used by the other school divisions were different from the ones that we used here. And two things in particular stood out. First, they had a very minimal use of that second hearing officer at a hearing. Now, there's a lot of good reasons that we've been using a second hearings officer. It's things like maintaining consistency across officer decisions. It's things like providing support for complex decision-making, and also to avoid the need to reschedule if somebody was sick or just couldn't make it to a hearing. And I'll loop back around in terms of all three of those, that we, our conclusion around this was there were ways to meet those very positive things that you were trying to accomplish in other ways that might still allow you to do it with the current full-time staff that are in the office. And then mostly, the other thing that they did, which was what we thought could be used, was hourly staff serving as hearings officers. These were often retired administrators who had come back to work as hearings officers to support the fluctuations in caseloads as things went on. So, the last place we looked was looking at research-based practices. And in particular, we were looking to see whether the kinds of things that are recommended in the literature could be helpful in the school division. And definitely, there seemed to be a need for additional supports that would help with behaviors. Principals, central office staff, and our own understanding of what was happening all indicated that greater supports could help address some of the student behavior that we were seeing. But we also concluded that the $100,000 was really not enough to support the kind of required expenditures that would be needed to roll something out Division Y. And so, with that, I will turn it over to the superintendent to talk about his recommendations.
Thank you, Leedy. So, we can go to the next slide. So, here are what my recommendations are. I do think we need to go ahead and increase the efficiency of the hearing office by reducing the use of the second hearing officer. Right now, about 20% of our hearings are done by one officer. So, we're already using it as a strategy, and we can bump that.
About 50% are.
50? Is it 50? Oh, okay. Sorry about that. I thought it was a lower number. It's about 50%. We think we can move that number up a little bit more without doing any harm to the hearing process. The issue about hourly support to particularly work with principals, there is some hourly dollars in the hearing office. We really haven't used those as fully as we could to support, school support, and I would work with Francisco and Dana Scanlon to use those dollars to provide that hourly support. And the truth is, with the fact that the initial research is that we need something more than $100,000 that's really going to get at this deeper issue about how to deal with discipline, and we haven't even finished the report, why would I want to spend your money, taxpayer money, until we've completely gotten the report done? And I suggest, let's just leave that as, hold those remaining funds, and then that can be used, you know, as we get to the end of the year in June for at least a beginning foundation for what we may need to do, and we may need to talk about whether we need even additional dollars in a placeholder. It's that trick, though, of trying to put an amount before we've done the work, and I don't really want to spend the money now until even the $100,000 that we already have until we've done the work. We can simply carry that over, and you'll know you'll have at least $100,000 in June to work with and maybe more if we decide to increase that as a placeholder during our budget process. So, that's where I'm at right now. We're not asking for an additional hearing officer at this time unless we start to see a dramatic increase in the caseload, even though we have seen an uptick. We think we can more skillfully use one hearing officer. We have some hourly staff that can really work to deal with some of the principal's support and some of the training. We have a lot of new administrators, and there's a lot that goes into doing a hearing packet. And we need to be sure we're being proactive about doing the training on that, and that's something our hearing office folks haven't had as much time to do over the last couple of years. And then finally, I'd rather spend that $100,000 after we have a report for this board to look at and think about how to really use those dollars instead of before. So, those are my recommendations. We look forward to your questions and discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Ray Brand. I actually have Ms. Hines, Mr. Moon, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Strauss, and Ms. Keys-Gamarra so far, and Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you very much. This is responsive to what the board asked for, and I definitely look forward to the rest of the work. The appendices are really helpful. Appendix E actually lays out, I think, pretty well what we're looking at in terms of data on disproportionality, and it also shows that although we do have an issue, we stack up very well, you know, against other school systems in Virginia. So, there's no doubt that we've done a lot of good work, but we also see that we have to do more. I had some clarifying suggestions maybe on some of the slides. I think Slide 6, if we could go back, and this has to do with the role of the SROs. Slide 6. SROs should not, shall not be involved with the enforcement. Yeah, I think the question here that maybe could be clarified with some language is, SROs shall not be involved with the enforcement of school rules or disciplinary infractions. That are not violations of law. I think even if there's a school rule or disciplinary infraction that is a violation of law, we still want the SRO only involved in the violation of law aspect, not the disciplinary aspect, and I don't know if that's clear from that. Maybe we say something like, you know, the SRO's role will be limited to the violation of law. You know what I mean? Because we don't want to open a door to the SRO to get involved in the discipline conversation.
And again, what we did at this point was we just took what was in the SRO MOU and just pulled it because we knew that that had had a lot of community input and that kind of thing, and so certainly with the guidance of the board, we're happy to make those changes. But that was, we thought we would come with what had been worked out previously in the MOU.
And that makes sense. And I think the thing, you know, that document went through several rounds, and we may still have missed just a few things, I think, in looking at this, so this is helpful. On Slide 7, I think we have a should that should be a shall. So, it says up there, neither the SRO, it should be nor, I think, other police officer should be present. I think we want shall. Neither shall be present unless FCPS administrators have a safety concern. I think when you put should, it's just not clear enough. So, I would suggest shall instead of should in that case. Also, Slide 9, the second sentence also seems a little unclear regarding the Miranda warnings. So, it says the SRO shall fully inform both student and legal guardian of the entitlement of Miranda warnings. I wonder why we, why we don't just say, shall inform both the student and legal guardian of their Miranda rights? Do you know what I mean? Entitlement, it sounds like the officer is going to say, you know you're entitled to a Miranda warning.
Again, I defer to the committee that very carefully legally hammered out what they wanted to have in the MOU.
Okay, well, I, okay.
But with counsel, we can certainly consider that. It was our effort to appreciate the work that had gone into the MOU and sort of go with them.
Right, and I guess I'm just raising it because I'm not sure, and I'm sorry that I didn't raise this when we were looking at the MOU before. But it doesn't say that the SRO shall give a Miranda warning. It says something else. So, I'm not sure what the intent is.
And I think before we could change it for the SRNR, we would probably have to consult back with the police about, and the attorneys, about why this language was chosen.
Okay. All right, so another thing on that slide then, which may fall into the same bucket of needing to go back, is I wonder why it doesn't say written authorization, and it doesn't say anything about in a language that the student and legal guardian can understand. You know what I mean? We don't have that in there either. All right, well, I'm almost done. On Slide 11, again, it's sort of making clear that the SRO's role is limited. So, it says the SRO shall not become involved in administrative school-related searches unless specifically requested by school to provide security, protection, or for the handling of contraband, and I might add, and the SRO's involvement will be limited to that purpose. Because we don't want to open a door, again, for the SRO to be involved in every aspect of the search. That's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Moon.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. I sent in some questions late last night, and I don't remember what I sent, so if you could refresh my recollection, if you, before you did that, let me see whether I could try On the superintendent's recommendations, I do certainly want to support not, you know, spending $100,000 right away, wait until, wait until we get the full report in June timeframe, and then make our decisions on what to do with the funding set aside. I can support that. Meanwhile, I mean, I appreciate the recommendation of you, you know, finding more efficiency in the hearings office by reducing the use of second hearing officers. My unfair question to you is, why hasn't that been done up until this point?
So, we have, there are several different types of hearings that are held, the main one being the referral to the superintendent. That's been the one where they're scheduled two hearing officers for every hearing. In that case, that's where the 50% comes in, and where Dr. Ray Brand and I had a different number, because what the hearings office has done past practice is to schedule two people for every one of those hearings. 50% of the time, actually, one person held the hearing. The reason the hearings office had done that is, as Leedy stated, in case someone didn't show up or called in sick, perhaps, then they wouldn't have to cancel the hearing. Sometimes the type of hearing that was involved was very detailed in having a second person to debrief with before making and having a second person to, um, debrief with before making a final decision was their second main reason. And then also, what has happened is by scheduling two people for those hearings and then at the last minute, the last minute when both hearing officers show up and it's not complicated, the second individual is then able to go back and write the reports for prior cases that were heard to get those done much quicker. So those were the main reasons why it's been done that way.
So, uh, so, uh, if I understood your, you know, responses correctly, you know, basically only those complex cases where you did fully utilize two hearing officers. Is that, is that fair for me to say?
That's pretty fair. That's what they've been doing for the most complex cases.
Most of the complex cases, going forward, I mean, you would not have a use, my assumption is you would not have a use to two hearings officers if to hear two hearings officers were not needed. I mean, that's my assumption. That's my assumption. Going forward, how would you be able to find efficiency if there is a need for two hearings officers for all those more, who are most complex cases?
Well, the recommendation of the superintendent is not to eliminate the use of two. For those very, very complex ones, there still would be a second one. But for some of those that are more in the middle area that are kind of complex but not quite as complex, we would assign only one person. So the downside, when your question was, what is the potential downside?
Drawbacks, right.
Drawback is that if someone calls in sick or some, an emergency happens, that case would be canceled rather than it be able to go on, which is rare, you know, doesn't happen all the time, but it could potentially happen. And then the other potential drawback is that now there's not a second person relieved from that case because it's not as complex to be able to then go start writing the reports for the cases that were held prior in the previous few days. So it might, might being the key word, make a few cases, spend a little bit more time before they're resolved and the final report is written. That would certainly be the case in times where there were a lot of cases. You have to know, the hearing office, as you all know, you see these cases, don't happen the same number all the time, every day. So there are certain times of the year where there's a lot more than others. So in those times, the drawback might be, we don't know, we can see, that cases would take a little longer to be resolved and potentially would have to be canceled.
Could I expect in June timeframe, June time, by, in the June timeframe, or when you bring us the rest of the report and the board needs to make our decisions on how to use our funding, that you will be able to tell us how the finding of efficiency has worked out?
Absolutely.
And, and I also see, as a part of superintendent's recommendations, using hourly staff as needed.
Correct.
So mayor in the report, I remember seeing using retired administrators as those hourly staff. If you could comment on the cost for retaining services of retired administrators and also their, their consistent availability to help us on an hourly basis. And third, third, whether, I mean, with all due respect to our administrators, whether current or retired, they are not necessarily hearings officers. To become a hearings officer, you will probably need some training. How you plan on doing, plan on training these retired administrators who may be just doing, probably has to be voluntary, uh, maybe, maybe a couple of cases in every few months.
So the cost for hiring a retired administrator is $44.02 an hour. And what it would, we would look at working, uh, we have a list of retired principals and assistant principals is who we would use for this, who have indicated that they are interested in working in some way. So, um, our Dana Scanlon, our, the lead hearing officer, has, was already reached out to some of those individuals to see who they might be interested in. So we're just in that beginning phase to see who might be available and who'd be interested. Those that would be, would receive training from her and from the assistant, uh, hearing officers on that. We would probably, we would certainly have them sit through some shadow work. We wouldn't just hire someone back and put them into a hearing. But we've, um, looking at some of the individuals who have said that they are willing to and would like to work, looked at those individuals who had very tight, good packets and who had a history of working very closely with the hearing office previously.
As, as a one last question on this. So those retired administrators on an hourly basis, uh, you know, helping out the hearings, do I assume that they will be acting as if they are second hearing officer to a lead hearing officer as opposed to them taking over entire hearing?
Most likely, yes. That's what we would use them for, for.
But you're not excluding.
Or it could be, or it could, well, this is something that's new, so we just have to work out the plan.
Okay.
Could be a case that's very, not very complicated and we would allow them to use that. It might be someone who's available to help with. As, as the report found, principals shared a concern that when they called the hearing office to get some support on packets and how to fill it out, that we might use them to do that and relieve some opportunities. So it could be a variety of things. We're still working that out. But certainly, I think the essence of your question is we would not put a retired person who doesn't have training into run a hearing. If that's what you're asking.
Again, again, with all due respect to our retired administrators, that, uh, quality control and consistency among these retired administrators in making decisions on very important cases will be critical that I would like to see when you give us a full report in June, that how they will ever come out.
And I don't know if Leedy wants to add anymore because this is a recommendation that was from many of the other hearing offices around the country. This is the best practice they used. So I know we would also look at that in terms of some of the best practices.
Because, because, if I, if I may add, uh, many, many, many years ago, school board members themselves used to hear three member appear, on, sitting on the three-member appeal committee to making a decisions. And there had been questions and debates amongst the board members on the consistency amongst the different panels. And that's one area that if you do not have someone doing a day in, day out, you know, seeing all different cases, range of cases, just come in a few times a year and making very important decisions.
So I think Dr. Duran has, um, kind of done a good job of the range of different activities that these hourly, um, hearings officers might do. The way that most of the other school divisions used this kind of staff was to have them come in regularly. So maybe they would be coming in regularly for 10 or 15 hours a week. And as you said, Mr. Moon, they'd become a part or a fabric of the office so that they're not showing up, it's sort of a substitute teacher might show up, but that they're regularly there and practicing and understanding what's happening in the hearings office so that they're not just, um, so that they're, they're hopefully making decisions very similarly to our full-time staff as well because they're trained and they're part of the fabric of the office, learning to do that.
And that's one thing that as we've reached out to individuals, we've asked them who would be willing to commit to coming regularly, not just here and there so that they had an understanding of the practices of the office. Thank you for clarifying that.
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Schultz.
So, guess what I'm gonna talk about? Numbers. Can we go to slide 19, please? This, this is the problem when the phrase, "A slight uptick," is used, is there is no frame of reference for what that actually says. What that actually says is since 2012, we have had a 57% increase in referrals to the hearings office. That is not good. You cannot say that's a slight uptick. 57%! In the same period of time, Dr. Braybrand, our student population has increased 4.6%. So we have a over 10x increase to the rate of the student population growth and referrals to student discipline office. That's the takeaway here. That's how we need to have this presented to us. This is not good. In addition, slide 20. Can you go to slide 20, please? This, the orange line at the top, 32.5% increase in the same period of, because this is misleading because this is 10 years of time. The previous slide is five years of time. In the previous slide, five years of time in the same period of time. So if you go to 670, 2012 to 13, that's a 32.5% increase. So 57.5% increase in the N, which are the number of students, and those same N are causing 32.5% more caseload because that's multiple students because you only have half that in terms of the number of students. So you have more students being referred at a much higher rate than the student population and they have a much higher rate of recidivism in being referred back for cases. That's a problem. I don't understand why that's not being presented today. That's, that's the clarity of focus, is a small number of students in certain areas, I don't know where, are causing exponentially more work. That's the takeaway. I, I'm not gonna do this for all of the appendix, appendices, but this needs to be, this work, this analysis is what needs to come to this board of what's really happening. Not only that, in the period of time since then, due to our work to revise the student discipline, um, referrals, what's being referred is much more serious because the, the principals have become exponentially more engaged and welcoming to doing reforms at the school level for the lower infractions. So if they're being referred now versus 2012 to 13, 2012 to 13, we were seeing much more run-of-the-mill stuff and we pushed and pushed and pushed and got that stuff referred back to being handled by school-based administrators. And so the things that are being referred are much more serious. That's a problem. And, and I'm frustrated as a board member as we're trying to get to, because we know where the problem is. We know, I, I can, I can do the stats almost in my head. Boys, boys 11 to 16, boys 11 to 16 who are minority, boys 11 to 16 minority, and students with disability. And students with disability exponentially higher referrals into the student discipline process. So what's going on? That's the part that's missing here. That's the part of us understanding on where rubber meets the road in our student discipline and, and the reform that we're trying to get and not being a pipeline to prison and not being a mill to turn boys into the negative discipline process and, and get, get the mindset that they're being handled at the schools. What's really being referred? What is the magnitude of the problem? And the magnitude, can you go back to slide 19, is not a slight uptick in the referrals to the hearings office.
So what I would say to you all is I don't know what you all looked at before over the last several years prior to my time. I'm bringing you the data. I understand board members will have different points of view about our analysis of the data, but I'm bringing you the data. We're not changing or tweaking the data to tell a different narrative. What we presented to you tonight is only part one. The deeper analysis of the discipline data is what we're going to do. And we're gonna come up with a plan by the end of the school year to address it. We're doing a lot better than school districts around the state and the nation, but we have disproportionality and those trends, as you have noted, have increased over the last couple of years and we're gonna do something about it. So, I, I, I guess all I would just say is this is not an administration that's not sharing facts, because it is. We can all have our different take. Lots of people look at different data and come to different conclusions and we, we accept, we accept different feedback to help make us better. But I, if we're in partnership, we're gonna bring data. That's why multiple eyes, there's 12 of you to put your own perspective and help us continue to improve our programs.
And, look, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm appreciative. I'm appreciative of the data. I am. And it is something, I mean, I, I have worked relentlessly on this and some of my other colleagues have been very focused on this, even to the previous board. Ms. McGlaughlin certainly at the forefront. The two of us have been relentless about this student discipline reform. However, you, that, you all have got to give us meaningful data and to come and say that this is a slight uptick is a gruesome misrepresentation of what has happened. A 57% uptick in five years to the student discipline office, to the hearings office, is bad.
Right.
You gotta, you gotta call the ball and not, not present it in a graph where it, you're not correlating it to really what has happened. So that's my first request, is let's, if we're airing out the numbers, let's air them out and be very, very clear about what's happening, even if it's not good. That's number one.
If I could just say, though, it says a very small percentage of students are referred to the hearing office each year and that, that remains the case.
So what? It's the trend. The trend is bad.
So Ms. Schultz.
The five years, I'm, I'm, look, I'm gonna say my piece on this because I have been, I'm, I'm, I am not happy about this. I'm not happy that we are not clearing the deck of really what is happening. And yes, you know what? 495, 496, 64 students as a quarter percent? Okay, you can just say that that's, but the reality is the amount of money that we spend with having school-based supports and SROs and, and, uh, the amount of discipline. What you're, what we're showing, if you wanna really be honest, let's put a dollar value associated with what the hearings office costs, what the amount of money that, with the supports cost, the SROs, everything for 464 kids. Because that's, that's where the rubber meets the road on strategic planning and budgeting to what this cost is. So that's number one. Number two is outcomes toward recidivism. You know, the, and this was, this is the big, um, shocker between slide 19 and slide 20, is 464 students are representing 888 cases to the hearings office. So we're, we're at like, you know, a two to one almost in terms of, of what the manpower, the man-hours are costing. And then there's, this is something that the board has talked about and I'm gonna talk about this at the very top level. I'm not gonna get to the behind the closed doors, but the correlation of board dis, things that make it through the hearings office all the way to the school board and things that make it through the hearings office and the what happens after. There, there's no, this is only, like, this is, you know, a slice, it's like an MRI slice of what has happened, not what's the outcome of the patient. And so the hearings office makes decisions and sometimes there's a, a, a sidestep to the school board and the school board gets involved and the school board makes a decision. Sometimes it upholds, sometimes it modifies, sometimes it denies the superintendent's request. What then? Are, are the decisions that we're ma, we're never informed about what happens after, after our decisions? Were they good decisions? Was, were we right to overturn the superintendent? Were we right to uphold the superintendent? What, you know, there's no, there's no improving the process as we go along. The same on the case, on this, on the point of the hearings office. From the hearings office decisions, when they make a decision and a kid gets, I don't know, involuntarily transferred or sent to alternative or this or that, then what? What's the, what, who's following that to determine and better improve the process as we go along and inform us so the next time we have to make a decision, do we keep doing the same thing over and over again? We don't know whether we're expecting a different result or not because we don't ever know what the results are. There's no squaring or finishing, completing the circle. So somehow, understanding the follow-through of the decision-making process and whether or not it was the right decision. Because some of us fundamentally feel like the involuntary transfer is a bad thing, almost always. With the exception of the case of when, when there's a victim. You know, this, the, the, the need to involuntary transfer a student out where the people in the building know eyeball to eyeball, they know that kid, they, they can watch and see and project and direct the, a successful outcome better than a whole new environment, a whole new group of people, you know, strip away the support system. But we don't know. We're, we're operating on a gut sense. There are some best practices on this, but what happens with those kids? We don't have any way to evaluate it. So I'd like some way in this phasing process for us to be able to do that. And then the discipline trends over time, when? This gets us to, we are in react, 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 react mode. When this happens, can you go to the next slide, slide 20? When do these 888 cases happen in a year? Do they predominantly happen, you know, bordering a quarter end? Do they happen, do 25% of those happen over the summer? I don't know. But tracking by month allows us to have an anticipatory capacity to start to head this off. Is this predomin, I mean, I can, I can guess from my understanding of the caseloads, generally where a vast majority of grades these fall in, but a grade distribution, the severity of the referrals, and when they happen in a year, when all of these schools, when I go and visit and, and participate in a school improvement plan discussion with counselors and, and staff, and they're trying to figure out how to get ahead of something, they don't have the data to inform them. When do absences happen? When do, do discipline factors happen? And getting better with disaggregating the data to show us allows us to be able to anticipate and give staff the informed knowledge of, hey, look, when we're approaching X, Y, and Z, when we're approaching a quarter change, when we're approaching, you know, kids coming back from or going on to break, or whatever it is, this is, so we can be more watchful, more intentful. Maybe we change when we do stress weeks, maybe we change when we do, you know, X, Y, and Z. Now we're using the data to inform better decision-making on the part of administrators, on the part of leadership team, and a part of the board.
One, one point of clarification, and we should provide you this disaggregated. If you go to slide 19, and I want to make sure I get it correct because I didn't do the study, but I want to make sure that lady, what I'm about to say is correct, so correct me if I'm wrong. 464 represents the referrals to the superintendent. The next slide, which is 888, are actually reassignments, re-entry requests, suspension appeals, or exclusion if you were excluded in another system and you weren't ever in FCPS, we have to have a hearing. What I believe you told me, I didn't do the, the, the study, was that the overwhelming majority of those in terms of the increases were the reassignment requests. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And what I think we need to make sure that we provide to the board is a disaggregated breakdown of what this 888 is. Because to Ms. Schultz's point, if that 888 is a whole bunch more referrals to superintendent, then what she said is absolutely correct, and, and we need to look at that very differently. But if it's a whole bunch that are coming to, from us from other systems, that we're expelled in that other system or reassignment, we have to address that, but it is a little different. And the reason why I say that is because all those other four types are the ones that we've had one hearing officer in. And so it's a little bit misleading, and I understand why you would see, why it would be confusing.
I, I, no, I'm, I'm clear, I'm clarifying.
Because the 888 didn't mean.
All I said, all I said was slide 19 is a, we got 57% increase from 2012.
That's correct.
And I said the second slide is a, for the same period of time.
That's correct.
Is a 32 and a half percent increase for the same period of time.
That's correct.
I don't know that the 464 is, makes up the 888. You have to tell me that.
That's my point, that's what I'm saying.
It's moot to the fact that since 2012, we've had a 32 and a half percent increase in the ca, in the caseloads.
Correct.
The question is why?
Correct.
That's the analysis part that we need from you to understand what the heck is going on. That in a five-year period, you have a 57% increase in the referrals to the superintendent's office and a 32 and a half percent caseload increase. That's not a small uptick.
No, I agree with you. I was only, and those first two points, you're absolutely right. The point I was trying to make was the notion of anyone, not you, thinking that the 464 meant that they were having several different referrals equalling 888.
I don't know because that analysis isn't here.
That's what I'm saying, is that we need to provide you that analysis in terms of the disaggregated breakdown. And so that's something I wanted to respond to and say we will provide that for you so that you can see what that really means.
And if I can remind people, this is the first bite at the apple. This is the first time we've begun to peel things back and have a more detailed intentional discussion about student discipline. And that's why we've actually scheduled it in the, in the recent past, okay?
It's not the first time.
But it's the first time.
Some of us have been having this conversation for a long time.
It, since I've been on the board, that we've had an intentional look at the hearings office data. And that's why we've scheduled along the lines of what we did last summer to have three separate work sessions on this. So I understand there's some anxiety and frustration that it's not all there, but it's, it's really the first step. And depending on what we do tonight, should inform stay, phase two and phase three. And we also have some improvements in our SRNR, which should also address it. And there's a recognition by the superintendent that there needs to be more tiered levels of support to our students and our staff in the buildings. So I absolutely understand your frustration, Ms. Schultz, but we are really trying to move this forward.
And I, but I don't necessarily, I, I don't know what we need into the buildings until we understand. This could be represent, you could have 888 represented in 4% of our schools. What's the distribution? Where is the problem?
And you have some of that data in Appendix D here, and it's going for a deeper, yeah.
But, 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 but that's, can I, can I, look, this is the whole thing, you guys, it's three phases. If honestly, if you wanted it all done in October, I, I, I mean, we weren't ready to have it all done in October. We pulled the first data, we went, oh, oh, uh-oh. But, but then we had this debate. I'm going to just be honest. Am I going to show this tonight because you all are going to see that data and go, oh, my God? Or wait a second, here's the data, but we're saying that we're going to bring January a plan, then June, you know, the, the, the full response. So it's hard, I'm just saying, you guys help me. I want to be transparent and collaborative. So it, it's, I do. So let's just work together about it. It is an issue, that's why we're bringing it, and we're, we're trying to be responsive. But, you know, Francisco worked wisely, I think, with Pat when we first did this follow-on motion, that it's not something we can just pull this data and have every answer lined up. We need to do the research. We, Megan and Pat. No, I know. Listen, the bottom line is we're going to be solution-oriented, we're going to dive into this, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make it better. The bottom line is we're going to make it better, and I know there's others that want to share.
I know they do. I'm just asking, and, and we do ask for this a lot, and it doesn't seem to translate always. In the appendices, like in the figures, could you please do the percentages as well as the raw numbers? That, that's how we, it, it, it's like we, we go like most of the way, but not all of the way there. Because seeing, you know, four disaggregated lines and one is a total, and the table is the total, that's, that's, that's not actually how we should be showing it. So, so, you know, for Figure D1, the number of out-of-school suspensions overall and at school level, the table, the graph actually shows the whole and the parts. The, the table should only be the whole with the, with the parts, with the lines in it, and then you should have the percentages. So you've got the, the overall line there, but that's not the line that belongs there. The table is the whole, if you understand what I'm saying. You don't show in the same table the overall line with the, the aggregate parts. Because it suppresses, it makes it look like they're not, you, you, you're using data incorrectly where you're showing, oh, look, here's the overall line, and then, look, everything looks like very small, like a bearson.
Can I offer a suggestion? Since you're really focusing on what's on the chart versus what's in the report and needing to have deeper dive in the report, if we could put a asterisk on this chart that says refer to D1 or to refer to Appendix D, which does go into percentages by elementary, middle, and high school.
That's not what I'm saying, I'll follow up later, I guess.
Okay. So now I have Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Thank you. Just to clarify again, the purpose of this is to whether or not we agree or disagree with Dr. Brabran's recommendation to not spend $100,000 now. Wait until we get the rest of the reports so that the $100,000 might actually be combined with something else that could actually provide some meaningful interventions for children. Okay, I support that. The, and I guess the, the, and so it's basically what, what you all are, are saying, Dr. Ann, is that the proposal for how to use a current staff, you think, will meet the caseload situation? That we will meet the timeliness of cases, because that's always very important. That you have a way of using temporary retired folks, but that who would be trained and capable, so that the quality of the work and the consistency, the rate of reliability will be there, because that was the one question I had. And I guess the one question is, is training or helper support to principals? Because that's one of the things that we, as school board members, if we get a case, and if it's from a school that doesn't normally forward a case, sometimes it's not exactly what we would like, and where we can see that more training is needed. So with this proposal, you feel that there would still be the opportunity for somebody to train them and help them?
That's our hope because right now in the past, well, actually in the job description of the, the lead hearing officer, that's Dana Scanlon, her charge is to provide that training.
Right.
She has been doing a lot of hearings herself, so.
Right, because she is the lead.
By being able to tap into that hourly support and try that plan, she would then be able to provide more support and professional development and training. And we're also going to look at different ways of providing it, some webinars, some other technologies for those basic questions. Not the, when I need a specific case question, but some of the generic things for some of our newer administrators, we're going to look at developing that as well, so two, two ways to address that.
Right, great. So I, Dr. Brabran, I support your proposal, look forward to getting more information. We certainly want to do everything that we can to make sure that kids are successful and they stay in school. The one piece I appreciate when you looked at caseloads and compared them to other school divisions. The one thing that we have aggressively done is kept kids in school, whether their cases are pending, the addition of the SOSAs. I mean, we figured out ways not for children to be outside of school. And I guess that would be my one weather, question when you're doing the research, because there are other school divisions that don't do as good a job of taking care of the children who are in trouble and that they can be suspended out of school for a very long period of time. So I don't know if, so when we are comparing caseload, I want to make sure that we fairly are looking at our ability to keep kids in school and to, you know, solve the case timely so that kids can get back on track.
So that's definitely a very important point, and we'll be taking a look at that, all the student outcomes in the second part and the third part. So the second part will show you a design that includes looking for some of those things, and then the final report in June will include that kind of information.
Right. And then just a little piece of sort of anecdotal history. Back in 1991, I remember we had 136,000 kids. And when we were looking at discipline and cases, Dr. Splain would so, would say, you know, the number of kids seems to be kind of consistent at that time, who were either frequent flyers or, you know, got themselves into more serious situations, was about 500 kids, and it was at that time. We would see sort of a reoccurring, not necessarily recurring kids, but the number, about 500 kids, the N size of 136,000. So, you know, I, I can't, I'm not a statistician, I can't say one thing or another about that, but I certainly do remember Dr. Splain saying that, so, as we compare to where we are now. But we certainly have worked very hard to try to keep kids in school and keep looking to see how we can, can better help kids. And I look forward to those reports. I do know that we have more children with challenging behaviors that are probably special ed-based. We have kids with trauma and at younger ages. And, well, no, just a minute. I'm, so I'm looking forward to how we can help children and that we staff and, and support our teachers and our principals and our children and our families when we have youngsters who we know we can help them and get them straightened out, and whether or not we are something else we could be doing that's going to help us. So, thank you.
Ms. Keys-Gamara, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay. Well, I want to make sure I answered the question. Ms. Strauss made it clear, when it brought me back into focus, so thank you. I do support the superintendent's recommendation. And I want to make sure that as we go forward, that we are including certain things. So the remainder of my comments will focus on that. It's my understanding, just from talking to some folks that have been involved, judges and folks that have advised FCPS, that there is some substantial, we've invested a great deal into our discipline efforts and trying to minimize the number of children that actually leave our system. And so I am not fully understanding what that is. So I am wondering, and I present that as a question more than a, than a demand. I'm wondering if we can get a, a better view of what those other efforts are. Because I think if we start thinking, if we start talking about investing more money, then that means we also need to be considering what are we do, what are we doing? And what of those investments is working or isn't working? Because I think it, it's correct, we, you know, however you describe it, uptick or some kind of radical trend, this is an opportunity to really evaluate where we are and try to figure out what's working and what isn't. And so that would be my hope, that this could be a, a deep enough dive that we're not just adding another layer without it, that decision being informed by what we're already doing. I'm also particularly concerned about the level of professional development. I read a sentence, and I can't tell you where because I didn't have the copies at the time, but I read a sentence in here that said, now that we're changing our focus, our discipline efforts are changing our focus from punishment to restorative efforts, something, that's, that's not exact, but essentially the same thing. And I was kind of surprised to see that written as though that was a new thing because I thought we were already focused on restorative efforts. So that was a little concerning to me. And so I, I'm wondering if some of the frustration myself and a few other, some other board members have had in dealing with these discipline cases is that we've got a battle between those two ideas, you know? And I don't want it to seem as though, you know, three strikes, this kid is out or anything of that nature, because there is this battle. When I look at what our juvenile court is doing and the efforts that they have put in place to restore kids and monitor them and make sure that they can stay in the learning process and stay in society rather than being treated like adults, it suggests to me that perhaps we need to do some more work to understand the developmental stages of kids and making sure that our efforts line up with who we're really dealing with. Because it's not the same as dealing with adults. And, you know, some, in, you guys have heard me in, in these various cases, so I won't go through that. But I, I think that we really need to kind of get all on the same page because I feel like there's been a clash of ideas, okay? One of the things that really inspired me, we met with the psychologists last week, and we all got this lovely little card in a really pretty bag that I'm keeping. But it says, "School psychologists provide services to students through use of evidence-based practices to address social, emotional, and behavioral concerns." One of the things that I read in here is that our principals are calling or school staff are calling the hearings office to kind of figure out, to get guidance, right? And it's sort of like, if you want groceries, you go to the grocery store. If you want car parts, you go to the car store. If you go to the hearings office, more than likely, you're figuring out how to refer the kid to that, to the, to that, to the hearings office. And so I'm wondering, and, and this may be already part of what you're thinking about, Dr. Brabran, but. but we may need to really beef up, and I'd like to hear about how we're using some of the wonderful services we already have to make sure that we're considering what else can happen besides sending a kid somewhere else. One of the concerns that I have had is I am not sure that we always understand how traumatic it is to change a child's placement. And so, you know, and I've also been concerned in looking at some of these cases, how little information we get about what steps have been take, have been taken to address the concerns that that child had. If I knew that we had, we had a behavioral intervention program or we saw the absences and that flag came up and we addressed that and we tried to make sure we engaged the family and we took all these steps, if we knew that by the time it came to the board, I would feel a lot better sometimes about making a decision that I would consider to be harsh otherwise. And so, you know, I, I know in my business, we call it behavior intervention. I'd like to call it a success plan for kids or something like that. Because sometimes it's not, we can't always use the same steps with everybody and say, well, you know, you did that, Johnny, now just stop it. And then we told him again, and then he didn't stop it, and, and the discipline continues. It becomes a slippery slope. You seem to want to say something, so I.
Well, you're just triggering, how many of the kids that come to the hearing office have already had a behavioral intervention plan in place? For example, would be a question based on that line of reasoning. What have we done? We have in the hearing pack an intervention checklist, but do we go through it to say, what's the bar of interventions that we feel? And I'm talking for administration, that we feel is acceptable that a school has done before it's going to the hearing office. In some cases, we've had issues where there may have been few interventions, but the issue is so significant, it's a, we send it on to the division superintendent, and that's a piece to look at as well.
And, and I think that this is going to take some, some conversations amongst your staffs because you, you know, you can have an event that's so significant that all you can do is kind of bar it off and keep kids safe in that situation. I understand that. But it concerns me that when we look at some of the appendix, appendices and, you know what I'm trying to say? Okay, appendices is getting late. You know, we're looking at, we're looking at these numbers that Ms. Schultz mentioned, right? And we're, we're looking at minority groups. And a lot of this is very much like the discussion we had earlier today with respect to achievement. So where we have low achievement, we also have high discipline. So somehow, that's another gap. And maybe we need to be identifying it as that because there's this strong possibility in my mind that the two are related, right? I mean, think about it, if you have a kid that's really brilliant, but we're looking at him as a discipline problem, he's probably really going to be a discipline problem because his brain is not, his or her brain is not engaged.
If I could just interject one more piece, one of the five drivers that we've identified as how we're going to get better is MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. We've done academic interventions for many years. We are scattershot in our behavioral interventions, and we're going to have to get much more systematic. Teresa's working with the state and leading a team. And we've been doing some work in a small number of schools. We're going to have to get that to scale. She already met with principals last year to say, this is where we're going, and we're going to, we are working to rapidly get that in place and then bring to you whatever resource needs. But part of it is redistributing how we currently using the resources to create an MTSS framework and what additional resources do we need. But that's part, you've just made the linkage that we've got to look at. If you've got behavior issues, you're not going to be achieving in our schools.
Well, the interesting thing, if I may just remember a glow for one of our previous meetings where the principals were all sitting here and describing how, remember there was a guy from Mount Vernon Woods, I believe? And, and, and they said they could not get a hold of the concerns they had until they dealt with absences, until they dealt with discipline. And some, sometimes you, you don't, you don't know what your child is experiencing. I won't go on because I could, I could just preach and preach. But one of the things I'd like for you guys, for, to you to consider certainly is there should be some kind of trigger when it comes to chronic absenteeism. I mean, we saw, we've seen situations where a kid has had excessive, excessive absences, and the only response we had was discipline. I'm, I'm feeling like we're missing something here, okay? Because that, those absences are usually an, an indication of a greater problem. And so I think we, I'm glad we're, we're working through this in stages because we really need to flush this out. And so that everybody can feel, and even the community can feel that when they're looking at those numbers, that kids aren't being targeted, but that we're making, we're doing the extra hard, deep dives to address these issues.
I would also just tell you way back, as I look at my own history in this system, we, we looked at absences of, if you get too many, incomes are truant officer, and you're going to court, and then the judge will take care of the problem. While the judges have said, schools, we want, and I've served on the judges committee with the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, judges from each region and a superintendent. And the judges are telling us, Scott, we don't want all this courtroom stuff on absenteeism. You and the schools need to work on putting supports in place for kids. So the change has been coming. It's been a tug of war. I'm just being honest, between school districts and the courtroom about who's responsible for dealing with the issue of absenteeism and truancy. And so I think many school districts now are coming into partnership with the local courts and saying, let's work together. We don't want them in the courtroom, and you don't want them out of school. So let's come up with ways that are win-wins instead of going back and forth about whose responsibility it is.
And if I could just add, we, we are working very closely with Fairfax County Juvenile Courts. We meet on a regular basis. We are trying to work together in supporting each other and learning about each other's practices. And we definitely have been moving in the direction of attendance specialist, which costs us a little more money, instead of hearing officers because we really do believe there's, there's more to what's going on in the home and how can we provide the support. So, you know, just looking at the resources and again, having attendance in our, our strategic plan is really very important for us.
I, I think that's excellent. This is my last point, and it's kind of going back to the beginning of our discussion. On page seven and nine, with respect to how we're handling the SRNR and SROs, et cetera, I, I think there's a tension here that we haven't really addressed. And that is, once the officer gets involved and you're mirandizing a student, it, it has an impact on, I think, on what our administrators can do with respect to their own investigation. And, and I, I will, I think we need to talk about that, not necessarily now, but we need to talk about that a little bit more. I have seen cases where, for example, you may have a protective order and a criminal case, and we don't go forward with the protective order because then the information from the protective order begins to inform the criminal case. And you don't want to put the people in the position of self-incrimination. So there's, there's a natural tension there that I think we need to do a better job of. I understand the need to protect our kids, but that's, that's a real sticky area there that I don't think we've quite resolved based on those two pages.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Ms. McLaughlin?
Okay. Some of us were talking about the timing of this work session being at the end of the day because as you can sense, there's quite a bit of passion for those of us who've been champions on this for a very long time. And, and I, I do want to say to all of my colleagues, I actually, in my heart, know all 12 of us want to do right by kids. We have different perspectives sometimes on whether we're already there. And I'm hoping we can continue to move the needle with Scott's leadership and his leadership team to get better at what we're doing. So I want to start from that position of good faith. It's a glow. A second glow I want to give is I still remember going with Francisco to the courtrooms, not classrooms, very first conference. I think Marianne Powerrelli was there too, and Teresa's predecessor, Jane Lipp, was with us. And also there was Judge Gail Carr and Bob Birmingham, the Director of Juvenile Court. And I was very excited when we all went to that several years ago in July because the goal was, how can we continue to get better? And Francisco, I am thrilled that we've had enough conversations that I, I believe you and I have very like-minded philosophy. And so I really hope we will continue to get there because in my seven years on the board, we've made some progress, but not enough. So with that said, for my colleagues, here's where I'm at. First, I know we're all in receipt of recommendations that came from the ACLU Fairfax about the language related to our SRO MOU. And Ms. Hines, I apologize if you were referencing some of it and I didn't capture that, but I want with intentionality to say that as a next step, I would like staff to review their entire recommendations and provide response back to the board and the superintendent that says, can we accept their recommended language? If not, what would be the reasons we can't incorporate all of their recommended changes? Because I want to be mindful that it might look fabulous from my own personal perspective as a social worker who worked in the juvenile court system, but I want to hear from staff what would be any concerns related to those. That's my first ask. The second thing, just kind of going in order, is on, it was, I believe, slide 16 on student behavior and discipline presentation. And this is where we talk about the phases. I wanted to ask Dr. Bray Brand, my one concern is I know there's some things that I'd like to see us be able to do in time for our next year's, our fall 2019 SRNR changes. And so if this comes at, in June, then we can't necessarily incorporate maybe some of the findings that would come from a final study. So I'm just wondering if perhaps with board direction that what we could do is while the final study might be done in June, when you guys come to us with your SRNR recommended changes for the fall of 2019, you might say, this will be in the final report, but here's some changes for the board to consider based on our work to date?
That sounds reasonable.
Yes, we plan to have that in April, May, as that one piece for the SRNR. So yes, we would be doing that.
Okay, thank you, because I, I have another ask that's going to be coming up soon. On slide 18, it talks about research-based practices for addressing student behavior and discipline for today's discussion. And I think in the ORC report in the appendix G, it talks about research on reducing exclusionary discipline practices. I assume is that what that's referencing from the PowerPoint to the report? Is that the research-based practices?
It is that appendix, but there's also some mention of some of the research-based practices on slide 22. It talks about principals and central staff reported certain research-based practices. So it mentions it there as well. But the more extensive discussion of it is in appendix G.
Right, thank you. So I guess what I would say, Dr. Bray Brand, and to my colleagues is, I, I appreciate ORC's initial capturing of this in appendix G. I would hope to see us get a lot more depth and breadth in maybe phase two. And so then I wanted to go to slide 19. And in terms of conclusions on referrals to the hearings office, Dr. Bray Brand, just to give you some institutional perspective in my time on the board, that quote there on the side, or that little statement on the very small percentage of students are referred to the hearings office each year, two predecessors from you used to be, that was the way of telling the, the discipline reform community, we don't got a problem, folks, it's so tiny. It's the, you know, N of one, one-fifth of 1%, you know, the .24 or whatever. That's not the number that worries me. The number that worries me is the 464. That is 464 students and their families who are referred to the hearings office. And I've never heard a family that has ever said to me that the hearings office wasn't, even the concept, not once they came through it, but just the initial referral alone was so startling and so upsetting and so distrustful. And then depending on a family's income level, they immediately feel the need to get a lawyer and legal representation. And I, I mean, the anxiety alone, I guess what I'm trying to say to everybody is, 464 individuals and their families, that's, that's an important number. And I don't think that can be discounted. And Ms. Schultz, I want to thank you so very much for doing that, that percentage analysis. That is what we should have been having on there. That, instead of the very small percentage, what I would have hoped, Dr. Bray Brand, is that in fact, you and your staff would have said, we're concerned. We've had a 57% increase in referrals to the hearings office. That's, that is a number to be concerned about, and that is what we should be saying. And then a 32% increase in caseload, again, that's the kind of, that's the kind of analysis that we expect even in, in this phase one. That should have been the takeaway, not some of the stuff that has a little bit of a feel of, don't worry, everybody, it's not that bad. And, and I will say, Dr. Bray Brand, you know, I've said this to you before, one of the reasons I was excited about our hiring of you is I know you care about restorative justice. I know you do. So I want to make sure you have a sense of these numbers that Ms. Schultz brought to us because I don't think without Ms. Schultz doing that, you and the 12 of us would have been having a little bit more of a realistic conversation about what is happening with our referrals to the hearings office. So with that, the other thing I wanted to just say in terms of some next steps, I would like to see that we get the raw number and the percentage of the annual hearings office cases in comparison to whatever way these schools, we can get that data from. And, and have it listed out. Because I think that right now, it's still hard to have that contextual understanding of what we're doing compared to the Washington area schools. I would li, also like to see that the number and the, the raw number and the percentage of students who are removed from their schools and, and assigned to an alternative placement. I think that's, that's something, again, for phase two, we should be getting in terms of data. And number three that I sent to my colleagues and to all of you in an email is, for seven years, I've talked about Arlington Public Schools has a second chance program. It's not just their public schools. It is a partnership with their county police, with their, their court system. It is an all-encompassing approach. And when I, and Montgomery County has something similar, at least in their SRNR, which I sent you the link to, which shows that for first offenses, whether it's alcohol or drugs, whether it's possession, use under the influence in the school, they're not being alternatively assigned to another location. It's only if they are for distribution and sale, and they have to have evidence of selling or intent to sell for part of that refer, being reassigned. So it's in their matrix, again. I, I, you know, I'm looking at Principal Hood, and I, I appreciate you being here. And also Principal Riley from McLean, I know that you guys care about your kids. I also believe that you put a great deal of faith in not just your superintendent and his leadership team, but in this board to help be a partner with you, to bring you the best practices, to help identify where school divisions around this jurisdiction or even around the country are doing things that can help you learn and grow as leaders and realize that there may be some other ways we can help kids. I have individual principals who will say to me at times, I didn't want to have to refer this student. I didn't want to have to have this student reassigned and leave my school. But I felt like that's, you know, I have to follow the SRNR, and that's all I have at my disposal. So those are the, the next steps that I would like considered and captured. So in, finally, to what Ms. Strauss was bringing us all back to, your recommendations, and I saved it for last because I, I didn't want to miss being able to give my, my other points here. Dr. Bray Brand, I can support everything you've put in front of us. However, I do have a caveat. I would like that in the bullet number two, where we're using hourly staff as needed, it is going to be essential, and I hope my colleagues will support me on this next step, that there be restorative justice training for these new hourly employees and for our existing hearings office staff. And that we utilize Bob Birmingham, our Director of the Juvenile Court, along with Judge Gail Carr, who I know, and Francisco, you might remember, they presented to Karen Garza and the leadership team ways in which to, that they were doing diversion, especially around things like alcohol and. especially around things like alcohol and drug cases. But that presentation never came to the board, and we never really got to benefit from Judge Carr and Bob Birmingham's experience in this area. So that to me is being able to support this recommendation, all three of those. It's all gonna be in the implementation. So that training is gonna be so important, again, not just for the new people we bring on, but absolutely our existing hearings office staff. If we're serious about really getting to restorative justice in our hearings office and helping our principals with restorative justice, then they've got to have that training. And thank you for everybody indulging me.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Now I have Ms. Pouchek and Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. I have to leave shortly. So I appreciate my colleagues. I appreciate you all being here. And Ms. Hines also, our new principal at the linear middle school. And I think overall, we're getting to the same place of wanting to figure out how to best support our kids in place without moving them and to have the multi-tier systems of support that help us get there. I guess not to add a couple of questions here, and then I want to hear from our principals a little bit, if we can, is going back to, I've been spending quite a bit of time with the data and the appendices. And I guess trying to better understand what that's telling us, what's there, what's not there, in a very brief personal analysis. So maybe some questions, and maybe that's, I know there's an analysis coming later, but maybe if there's something, some kind of better summary we can get from this to see what we're looking at. And I knew you were gonna say, Dr. Brabram, but can I ask a question before you, okay? So I guess, first of all, something I'm not seeing yet, and perhaps I've overlooked, is for me, I did think that the data of the disproportionality definitely stands out, even if we assumed that we were going to see it, we're seeing it. And I guess one question I'm not seeing is kind of what Mr. Moon was saying in our last presentation, is we have separate charts for students with disabilities and then for racial, ethnic group. I don't see, unless I'm missing it, where there's an overlap or where there's an overlap of the Ls and that, right? So is there, do we have that data available? Am I missing it? I see, I guess, let me, so this is in the full report on page twenty-nine?
So we were, for this kind of quick look, we have not taken that kind of a deep dive. But again, for the subsequent work for Phase Two and Phase Three, we would be digging into it to try to understand who these students are, which schools it's happening at, and then also why is it happening? So that's part of the plan for moving forward, but it was not done yet for this analysis.
Okay, I understand. And I guess maybe before getting to the analysis, is it easy to get that data? It is not easy of where, it can be done, but it's not easy. Okay. Well, maybe I'd like to hear more about what it would take, just because we are, again, just looping all students with disabilities in one category, and we're seeing the highest numbers of disproportionality in that subgroup. And then we're seeing probably the second, if I'm reading this correctly, the second largest numbers of disproportionality in black students and then Hispanic, Latino students. Am I reading this correctly from the charts? Yes. Okay. And we are, in some instances, seeing an increase in elementary school discipline and middle school catching up to high school. And in another area, maybe not as much. And then for economically disadvantaged, we saw a very sharp drop in seventeen eighteen. And I guess if there's any data around that, I mean, I would just, I understand it's coming later, and we want to see the analysis, but if you have any more information on that.
Yeah, that's, I think, a data point that surprised all of us. And there is some, we've had some discussion about potentially who, we get our economically disadvantaged data from students who have applied for free or reduced meals, and whether that's some of the things that are currently happening in the school system of providing free and, or providing free meals to all students in certain schools, may be impacting.
But that's new, isn't it? It wasn't in seventeen eighteen. It was, I thought that was this year.
But just some of, some of the dynamics around applying for it, as well as some of the issues around whether all of our students would be willing to give away the information that's required in order to apply, or their families would be willing to submit it. So some of those things we may need to dig into, because we're not quite sure why it looks the way it looks. And it's been a curiosity, I think, for all of us as well. We just haven't dug into it enough.
Okay, no, that's helpful to know. And then finally, and I guess, you know, a little bit more of the data, and then a question is, and the comparisons with other Virginia systems. We, according to this data, we are doing better than most, except for Arlington and Loudoun Counties. Loudoun was surprising. And so, you know, anything, and not in all areas, in some. And, you know, I assume that's something that we're looking at in the, in the analysis. And if we are, that's good. I'm looking forward to it. And I guess in the meantime, because I've had some conversations with some principals, and we have some here whose data, some we're seeing an increase, some we're seeing a decrease, and maybe it's middle school and high school. I know it's not separated here. But if you could share with us, because I've been hearing a little bit of, yes, if we want to, and I agree, move away from just referring to the hearings office, what can we do in-house in building? Sort of what, what is needed? I have some schools that are creating new positions to try to address the attendance and the other issues. Other schools that surprised me that said, well, we need more support on the, kind of on the discipline administrative side, and it's really always the Sosa Support Services side, because you want to be able to address more of the students and the cases internally. So I don't know. I guess I'm wondering, since you're here, Greg, and some of our other principals, if there's something you're, you're seeing now that maybe you want to share that's not popping out to us in this data, or that would help put some context into how to help us keep students supported in school?
You know, I wish I had the magic ticket. I think that's what we turned over to you all to be looking at for this. You know, for all of us, I think, as principals, you know, we try to, try to find kids doing the right thing as often as possible and find them doing the wrong things when we have to. And I think that's really kind of the mindset we come after it is, you know, we try, we're there to support kids, help them any way possible. I think when it comes to recommending a kid to the hearings office, it's really, you know, it's, it's based on the guidelines as why we do that and why we have to do that. Sometimes it's not always like this kind of painted a picture. When I was thinking of students, the same students over and over again, when a lot of times it's, and we have to recognize, these are students in the learning process. They're teenagers that oftentimes make decisions that are not the best decisions for themselves and their families. And sometimes it's, it's that one decision, they make it, they learn from it, they move on. But I will say that from the principal's side too, for us, you know, when you have to meet with the family and the student over these significant events, life events for them, it's not something that we obviously take pride in or enjoy. It's a tough thing that we try to work together with the family and with the student to get them through this decision that they made. So I wish I had the right answer around what's the best way to do that. I think we're always looking every single year is, what can we do different than the year before that might help students and our student populations as that changes, the demographic changes, and finding ways to support students? I know we've done a lot more outreach for students than a lot of schools have around food pantries and coat drives and shoe drives and all kinds of things just to meet basic needs of students. But, you know, I think that helps in a way, but I don't know, it doesn't look like it's changing the numbers up there.
No, I appreciate that. And I guess for us to think about, and I don't know if there's a way to do this, but I'm wondering, as we look at this data and we think about next steps, for us as a system and perhaps individually as schools, are there incentives or disincentives that we have in place now to help change that data or ones that we could look at? So whether it's the way we staff, the way, you know, what we're measuring and valuing, I guess those are kind of the bigger questions I would like to see, because, you know, our words are very important and the data do a lot. But in the end, you know, as a system and managing our system, and so much that a school looks at every day, what are we doing to either add to this problem or, or can we be doing to reduce it? And that would help support our staff. So I guess that's what I would like to see in our analysis, because we are at the policy level here, is really that. And it could be different school by school, or it could be something similar at every school, whether it's supporting specific students or an administrative team. So I don't know. I guess that's where I am. But I cut you off before, Dr. Brabram, so I don't know if, oh, and sorry. I also support Ms. McLaughlin's request. I appreciate this much easier streamlined method to look at the ACLU People Power recommendation and going line by line item here, and also support the superintendent's recommendation, looking for further data. But sorry, I don't know if you had something, Scott?
I just had one quick nugget. Part of, part of the solution's gonna run through when we talked about race. It's really race plus gender. It's not women, it's not females. It's African-American boys and Latino boys who are being disproportionately put through our system.
And students with disabilities, which I want to see where there is not overlap, is my question.
Right. And there's probably overlap in both those categories. So that's where I think the deeper dive is gonna come and the plan. And then based on what we have, our plan is gonna help us, our framework in January is gonna drive us to the right answers of what we need to do differently. And some of it, I think, begins frankly in the classroom, how behavior is perceived, whether we need that first interaction to be a referral to the office, because that's where the buildup starts. That's where the, the reputation starts. And what are, what are the, we, quality tier-one instruction is another one of our growth strategies. That's around good instruction. What's quality tier-one behavioral management, behavioral support look like, so that the first thing isn't, when someone's, and again, it sounds small, but it's, from my prior experience, and I think from the experience here is, it's cultural cues for the teacher and the kid that are assuming that one thing maybe is more, we call, we call them the three Ds, defiance, disruptive behavior, and disrespect. So how those are perceived in a classroom, it's very.
And it's not just, I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, is that, yes, and so we can do the training, we can support teachers, but then at the same time, you know, if you're not looking and then valuing, measuring, and, you know, incentivizing, right? So a teacher who might be effective with most of her students, but not her students of color, right? So how are we going to, A, train and educate and show the data? And, and then at what point are we saying, which I think with Dr. Duran is, you know, whatever you're measuring and valuing, and then what are our sticks and carrots around that? You know, I guess that's where, we're really ready to have that conversation.
No. Part of what Project Momentum's success has been is day-to-day supports for schools to respond to the, the data, whether it's academic, and OSS has primarily been academic data. We need to do the same sort of focus with their behavior data and then go, oh, wait, what's going on? I'll leave you with, just as a high school principal, thirteen years ago, seven teachers were fifty percent of our referrals, regardless of boy, girl. Seven teachers in a school of a hundred teachers, seven teachers were fifty percent of referrals. We needed to have interventions for those seven teachers. Then we did the other thing. And I just, I wasn't directed. Lilian then had told me to do it. George then had told me. We just said, hey, what about? And we had a counselor who loved pulling data. So pull it and see. Twenty-three, he was a counselor who, why is this kid coming? Twenty-three kids were fifty percent of our referrals the other way. So one piece was what on our staff side, the other is those twenty-three kids, what Fairfax was offering them wasn't working. What were the additional levels and tiers that we needed to provide in that school? Or when we went through those twenty-three kids, Marcy Miller was my DSS at the time, what's missing? You know what? We can't offer that here. That's not here.
And I've had new principals say, oh, this teacher that was so popular, but look at this data, right?
Right. Well, and, and, and listen, some of them were simple things. One, one teacher was, we went in and looked at what the teacher was doing. The warm-up was reading the Washington Post. Reading the Washington Post then was mostly paper. Some kids were being referred every day because they were noisy, changing the paper, and the teacher, it drove them crazy. So it sounds whatever, but it starts, it starts, then that's disrespectful behavior. And so it sounds small, but it's getting at the micro moves between a teacher and a student in a classroom, and then knowing that the school is offering support. We didn't punish those seven teachers. In fact, what we had was a teacher who was outstanding, never had a referral, never, ever, was a Fred Jones disciple of classroom management with, you know, preferred activities as one of those strategies. And we sent them, we gave them a sub-day to go sit in the class and observe. And that was a big part of helping that teacher get some skills. So we've got to, it's got to become more systematized versus just hoping each school will figure it out, each teacher will figure it out. That's part of what the answer's gonna be.
Are you finished, Ms. Pouchek?
I apologize. I have to go speak, but I appreciate all of you very much. Thank you. And I look forward to the analysis.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Ms. Pouchek, you were speaking. But can Terri on at your next event? I would like to first thank Principal Hood for underscoring what I think is the reason for some of the intensity here, and that is that when this, when these referrals happen, it's very often the most traumatic event for that family in the school setting that they're having to experience, because their child is now subject to disciplinary action. So, you know, I think that the intensity that has been exhibited around this table, Dr. Brabram, don't, don't misconstrue it as sort of that there is additional anger on the part of the board. I think what it is, it just reflects our own passion to really promote a healthier atmosphere within all of our schools. And so, with that said, I, I too would like to echo support for your recommendations with the caveat that Mr. Moon's initial comment about reducing the number of hearing officers is for an efficiency purpose, is sort of like, well, why aren't we doing this already? If this is, it also raises additional concern for me, since I think some of the information that came back from the principals was that they, they were concerned about inability to reach hearing officers. And so, you know, let's be careful with that, on that aspect of it.
Yeah, can I say just that, because Mr. Moon brought it up too. One of the advantages of the recommendation, I'm just being honest, though, I didn't quite say it this way. We get to monitor something all year and then come back to you in June and make sure that this hearing officer singleton piece is working. And that somebody had asked before, I think, the number of days to return the hearing and all that. We need to keep tracking that. So we'll have a chance, we'll have months of data to be able to do that as well. So it really gives us more time, not only to do the data analysis, but to track this strategy and make sure this efficiency isn't hurting the quality of our response back to parents.
Yeah, and I think that this, I think you've underscored, this is Phase One, and on a very significant topic, and we're gonna come back and revisit this. So before I go into just a few points, I would just like to echo my sentiments with regards to Ms. Schultz and Ms. McLaughlin's comment about data and other people's comments about data, because getting to those why questions is really what this board wants to get to. Like, how can we address the whys of what we're seeing in data? And so, and I know this is Phase One, so the answers to some of those, we're not there yet, right? Staff is working on them. But I do look forward to, you know, in the future, getting to those answers so that we can, we can talk about them as a board. So one clarifying question, where there was new data, several times it was mentioned that this came directly out of the MOU. Is that true for all of the new language that was listed?
No, not all of the new language. The one thing that did not come from the MOU was the part about the administrator following up and interviewing and going ahead with their discipline process after the police officer had finished. But the.
Which slide is that? Where are we, where are we looking that this is?
So, sorry. So slide seven. On slide seven, that was language that we were, is not from the MOU, but we were adding to clarify. but we were adding to clarify that the administrator still had a responsibility to go ahead with completing the discipline process even when the police were involved.
Okay, so...
But the other language that is, makes up most of it, that there's big chunks of red, that's all from the MOU.
Okay, so the bulk of my remaining comments have to do with the MOU language, incorporating it into our SRNRs, because I think, I think that it's been mentioned a couple of times that, you know, let's take, make sure we're understanding how MOU language translates into our student rights and responsibilities, because that's where questions were raised in my mind. So just, and there's probably more, but just a few examples. On slide six, this, I believe, is new language from the MOU. So it says, "shall not be involved with enforcement of school rules or disciplinary infractions." In my mind, I'm thinking, well, what would happen in the case of, say, like a school fight? It's not necessarily a violation of law, but are we saying that the SRO won't be involved in that even if they're around, if they're in the proximity to the event?
So interesting you should bring that up, because during our focus groups, this was a conversation that we had, because some of the principals came back and reported to us that SROs are concerned even about telling kids, get to class, you know, or you're in the hall. So I do think this is further discussion we need to have and some clarification. And keeping in mind that any recommendations we make to the SRNR will be presented probably in April work session. So we won't be making any immediate changes, so this is gonna give us time to circle back and have another focus group with principals, as well as get some guidance from Division Council.
Okay, yeah, and you're already thinking along the same lines, it sounds like. So then on page, on slide nine, and I think this may be something that maybe Ms. Evans would have mentioned. So in the sentence, it says, "The SRO shall take immediate steps to contact parents." That's not the same as contacting parents. That's saying they're gonna take steps to contact parents before they're gonna question the student. What, how do I translate that? How would, as a parent, what does that mean if they, you know, they made a phone call, the line came up busy, then they proceed with questioning?
I think the next sentence then says that they can't go ahead and question until after they've given the rights to the parents.
Okay, so a student would be held then. All right, and so that's actually great, because my next question was, my follow-on is that sometimes I think what I haven't understood as a board member is, if the SRNR, let's say on the notification of the parents, what happens in the process if they fail to notify the parents? Does that negate the infraction? Or is that a defect that would cause the ability to, the hearing officer to enforce?
So what we've done with the current SRNR language is that it says, "When practicable." And the administrators have all been very thoroughly trained around the issue of, that doesn't mean that you call once, you call 10 minutes later, you call five minutes later, and then you say, well, I tried three tries. So the principals have to document when they made the calls and the various attempts. Again, that's to get a written statement, and what they've been told basically is, if you can't, then you can't, just don't get a written statement. But the effort is to allow the student to write their side of the story. But they wouldn't go forward then with a...
Okay, my, you know, I believe my experience as a board is that sometimes we do get statements that have been taken, and they're part of the record that we're reviewing, and so...
And there should be something on there that tells when the parent was notified. The student also is told that writing the statement is voluntary, and it says it at the top of the statement.
Okay, and, yeah, and that, that, those circumstances, I think, you know, the voluntariness is, I think, there's a, I think there'd be some question. In that, on that same, yeah, how that's perceived. And so then on that same slide, it says, "The SRO shall fully inform the student and the guardian of the entitlement of Miranda warnings." And I know Ms. Hines raised this as being, you know, how do we, how do we know that they're gonna even understand what that even means? Is it your thinking that this would mean, you know, you have the right to remain silent, anything you can and say will be, if you choose not to, if you waive that right, can and will be used? Is that really what we're talking about, or is it more of a, you know, making sure they understand what it means?
I do think we need to circle back and talk to Lieutenant Labraca. She was supposed to be here today, but she was ill, because there needs to be some clarification. In this instance, an administrator at, right now, and we haven't moved with the SRNR, but according to MOU, an administrator would not even be in the room when this is taking place.
Okay, you mean when the...
It would be, when the SRO is questioning the student, right now, that becomes a police issue instead of a school issue.
Yeah, and I think that I maybe am just echoing Ms. Hines's concern, which is, you know, these are students that could be a 14-year-old or a 15-year-old. They may not have a thorough grasp of even of English. And we, I think that that's where I would be worried, that we're, now we're starting to forget that they're students, and they need to understand, and their parents need to understand what the gravity of the situation is. And I think more than just a reading of a Miranda warning may be required in some circumstances. And then on slide 11, it says, "At no time shall an SRO request that an administrative search be conducted for law enforcement purposes." So I can envision the scenario where an SRO might suggest that that take place. Again, my thinking is, what does that mean in terms of the process? Does that, if, say, an SRO say, hey, we really need to do an administrative search at this point, and then that search happens, and that information becomes part of the record, how do parents, you know, this is slide 11, how do parents, what does that mean to those parents? And what does it mean to the board in terms of our review of a hearing that would come forth? So these are things to just, again, I think, Ms. Johnson, you're already thinking about these same questions, these same types, because it's just another example of a question that came to mind as I read through. And I realize that we should try to be true to the intent of the MOU, but we need to also be sensitive to how it gets incorporated, because this is really not an MOU, now we're writing the SRNRs. Okay, so the last slide, and this is really maybe just a little more for Dr. Duran to maybe just flesh out a little bit of what is meant on slide 22. What, it says, "Hundred thousand dollars will not be sufficient." But what are we talking, what's the magnitude? And what do some of these things mean in the paragraph? We didn't really cover that a lot.
I will let Lady respond to that. This came out of the ORC study specifically, so I'll let her respond to that.
So I think we're gonna have a more definite response to this in Phase Three. But what this was intended to say was, when we looked at $100,000 and we looked at what you could do with $100,000 in relation to student behavior, for example, in the sub-bullet, it talks about social-emotional learning programs. Well, that would probably, the $100,000 would probably cover 10 to 15 of our schools rather than 200 of our schools. So as we were looking at some of what these research-based practices and strategies were, the $100,000 would not be sufficient to support them. Now, again, we will dig into this more clearly and more deeply with Phase Three, but in our initial look at it, our judgment on it was that the $100,000 would probably not be sufficient to do everything that might be wanted or needed, given what the data ultimately will look like.
But when you say probably, do you mean that it might be sufficient?
I would say that it's highly unlikely. I don't want to be too definitive, because we haven't dug totally deeply into it. But as I said, if you, if we need to put social-emotional learning programs into five or six of our pyramids, or all of our pyramids, $100,000 would not support that in any way, and so...
Yeah, and maybe this is just something to come back to the board again later. But if we're talking, you know, a two-times factor, okay, that's one concept. But if we're talking an eight-times or 10-times factor, then, you know, I think this board would, we need to have all this fleshed out a great deal more.
Yes, and that will be in Phase Three, will all be fleshed out with those costs. But we definitely know $100,000 will not be sufficient in terms of what we're talking about with all the research strategies.
Well, thank you all for the presentation.
We have a number of go-backs, but before we go to the go-backs, I would like to have a couple of moments myself to present, or just to speak about a couple of things. One is, I'm very concerned when I look at Appendix D, because Appendix D really focuses on what's happening in our schools. And in particular, if you look at D9, you see that there are five elementary school, five groups of elementary schools that are above the standard deviation on the number of referrals. And then we have an additional, or then we have one, two, four high school pyramids that are in the same category of being above the standard deviation for the overall division, of which in the high school level, there are three of the four are in one region. And so it begs the question of, you know, going back to, for those families that are affected, I don't think that we can wait until next year to start addressing these concerns, because these kids, especially those that are being referred in elementary school, once you start that cycle, then you are starting them down a path that is hard to reverse. And so I would urge that, and I'm sorry that Dr. Brabrant stepped out, but I, and I might repeat it when he comes back in, that, oh, he's back, that we have some interventions in Region Three prior to the end of this year because of the percent of referrals coming out of both the elementary, middle, and high.
I'm gonna ask Dr. Panarelli to address that, and what they're already doing out of Intervention and Prevention Services.
Okay, well, I wanna, you wanna go ahead and do that, and then I have more.
Okay, just as background, so as we've developed strategies around the strategic plan, and we were looking at action plans, and one of the focus of the action plans was schools that had high levels of suspensions, or schools that had high levels of disrespectful, disorderly behaviors. We have highlighted those schools, and we have begun a plan of intervention with those schools to go to administrative teams, meet with them, go through their data, try to look for things that Dr. Brabrant was suggesting are many referrals coming from a few teachers, are many kids involved, you know, dig deep into the data and then develop patterns of support with each school individually. So we have, for attendance and for the disruptive behaviors, begun the process of sort of highlighting which schools seem to need the most intervention at this point, and then sending teams with them. Now, if those schools also have, I don't know, difficulty with kids who, number of kids graduating, or whatever, we're collaborating with the Office of Counseling so that we're not hitting the schools multiple times, but going in as a team.
Ms. Panarelli, I'm really glad to hear you're doing that. I'm a little disappointed when I look at this, that as the one of two school board members who represents the bulk of these schools, I would like to have heard about that prior to sitting here tonight. So I really appreciate that, and I will respectfully ask for a deeper dive on what exactly is happening in support of these schools, because it's really important, and it's a bit disconcerting to see so many of them in one region. And so it seems like we need to have a more intentional effort there, and I'm glad to hear we are. Additionally, when we talk about training, I would echo the approach that many of my colleagues have, which is that we really do need training on restorative justice and the tiered levels of support. And I would expect that that training goes beyond the hearings office, but that we actually have to be doing that intentionally with the principals at each of these schools that seem to have a higher number of referrals. And so I would, I would expect that that gets done prior to June of this year, because time is of the essence for these families. Then I would also just bring people's attention to the need for, as we put together our budget, and Dr. Brabrant will be bringing as a budget in January, we talked about priorities earlier today for that budget. I don't think we can wait until June to have some placeholder put in there on the need for the multiple, the multi-tiered supports. And so if you can have a rough estimate of those numbers prior to the board seeing a budget, I think that will be important to do. And then, as far as the recommendations, I do support the recommendation of taking the $100,000 and not putting it into additional hearings officers. I would expect that we actually train our RASs to be able to pick up some of the workload on providing the supports to principals as to how to address discipline issues, because they may be able to bring in resources that aren't discipline-focused, but rather support of the individual focus. So I would expect that we do that. And then regarding the SRNR, I love your idea, Ms. McLaughlin, of going through and doing a full analysis of it, of the ACLU's recommendations, and coming back to us with what we can and can't do. But I would also urge that when we do our SRNR, and I mentioned this in the prep, that we actually have links in our SRNR to the FAQs, to the videos on the SRO, MOU, the training, so that when parents are looking to better understand what their students need to know if they interact with an SRO, they have the fuller body of knowledge. So with that, so just to recap, focused interventions between now and June on those areas where we do have some concentration of referrals. When we see our budget, we need to have some funding set aside to address the needs for tiered systems of support, and that in the interim, we have training on restorative justice and behavioral supports with a concentration on those schools that have a higher level of referrals, and then the SRNR discussion. And now we have some go-backs. Ms. Hines, you're the first go-back.
Thank you, and I apologize, I had two questions I forgot to ask. The first one gets to SROs and the fear that people have about the school-to-prison pipeline. I think that's one of the worries people have when it comes to SROs. And often what comes up in those conversations is the offense, the criminal offense, I guess, of disorderly conduct, right? And I think we just recently got an email that an FCPS student was charged with disorderly conduct somewhere in the school system. So, and I think, you know, what people worry about is, there's sort of, that is kind of a hop and a skip from the, you know, defiance, disrespect, disruption, whatever, you know, that's kind of all in the same pot, right? And if our, some of our teachers are not well enough trained to work the right way with those referrals, then a kid can end up that way, you know? So I kind of wondering, I was wondering if we could have as a next step, an understanding of what disorderly conduct is from the perspective of the Fairfax County Police? I mean, what, in the law, what it is? And then also, if we can get data maybe from the last five years of how many kids in FCPS have been arrested and charged with disorderly conduct? Is that possible? Just to see how big the problem might be, or the issue is?
Specifically disorderly conduct, or how many kids have been arrested from the schools?
I'm thinking of disorderly.
I don't know that we'll be able to get the charge, because they change between point A. I mean, in other words, so a kid will go, and then it gets diverted, and different things happen, but we...
Can we, I mean, do we have somewhere maybe already data on how many FCPS kids have been? Yeah, go ahead.
Because I went to the legislative session that the county government had, and they did have specific information on charges, and it was disaggregated. They neglected to bring the disorderly contact one, but they did bring, I think it was something about, I forget the particular charge, but it, those numbers had gone down. What I have been told is that the disorderly charges have, are where we have the most significant activity. And so we do need to get a hold of that, absolutely.
Okay, good, so I guess I would just ask, whatever data is available, if the board could get it, you know, as soon as we can. The other... The other.
So could I just, on that, Ms. Keys-Gamara, where were you, so just to know where you're getting the data so that we don't go and waste time trying to find it?
It was the county, the Board of Supervisors Legislative. Karen, Karen Corporate Sanders and I both attended. Karen went to another meeting. I stayed to hear this particular report. Your per, our person, Michael Malloy. He was there, but he, this report came directly from Fairfax County, the Fairfax County Police Department. They do have those numbers.
So Chief Rossler.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I just wanted to ask about, and I appreciate Dr. Braybrand, you're getting back to me about the question of, which I think is still outstanding, which is communication between SROs and ICE? And the worry that people in the community have? You know, it is definitely in our interest to be able to confidently assure our students that SROs are trusted individuals in the building, people they can go to with a problem or a question. And they don't have to worry about information somehow getting from SROs to ICE. And, and, you know, I think there are some questions about, still, I think, about the general orders for the police and what is prohibited in terms of communication from FCPD officers and ICE, and what is not prohibited, and where that line is. And so I, it's my understanding that we will get the report on that communication in the next Braybrand briefing. Is that the hope?
That is my hope. I haven't had a chance to talk to John Foster today. I did share it with Marty over the weekend. And I know it was something right before I left town for a while. So I, I need to re-track. I'm hoping, hoping for this week. One little proviso is, as many of you know, many of you and myself are leaving on Wednesday. So it could be one more week, but I will shoot for this Friday.
Okay, so I would just ask the chair. I think there may be outstanding questions. After we get a written report like that, we might want to add another work session to discuss it. That's something the chair could schedule?
I think what we want to do is wait until it's released, and then we'll decide, and I'll work with you once you see it. I'm sorry. Ms. Schultz?
So I, I have shared with the clerk two charts that I want to share with you guys on why this is important. If you can slide up to the first one. So if you look at in your packets, this is D one. This is the, the question of stripping out the overall suspensions. So these, Dr. Braybrand, these are your suspensions for the last five years, elementary, middle, and high. If you could slide down to the next slide. If somebody told you that you had had a twenty-nine and a half percent increase, decrease in high school suspensions, that would make you feel really good. If somebody told you you had a forty-four point seven percent increase in out-of-school suspensions for elementary-age children, that should make you feel sick to your stomach. It does me. Thirty-one point one percent for middle. This is why the portrayal of data is so important. Because if you bury those three lines on the same chart with the total overall suspensions, you can't figure out what it looks like at all. What does it even mean? I, I, I don't posit that we're necessarily doing the right thing. We may be in some places. I don't know because we don't have the information presented in a way that is meaningful. In the same period of time, and the next chart down, I didn't send it over. The number of students who were affected the first year was two thousand, or it's three thousand one hundred and eighty-seven. It went down seventeen percent the next year to twenty-six hundred and forty-five. It went back up again five percent the next year to twenty-seven hundred and seventy-five. It went down eighteen percent the successive year to twenty-two eighty-six. It shot back up the next year, thirty-seven percent, to three thousand one hundred and forty-one. And it shot back up even more last year, another eight percent, thirty-three ninety-six. So the overall trend, you could say, oh, well, we've only had a seven percent increase in the number of students who were affected by out-of-school suspensions in the last five years. But why the, why take the overall percentage, which is only a seven percent increase? Well, it's only a seven percent increase, but you've only had a four point six percent increase in the total student population. This is why the deeper dive on analysis matters. Because you would never know unless you started pulling apart that data to understand you have a wildly erratic from year to year, number of out-of-school suspensions. Up, down, thirty-six percent, thirty-two percent, down, up, five percent, down seventeen percent. Something is happening. I don't know what it is, but these are the questions that need to be asked. These are the questions you all need to be answering with more effective data to help us understand why in five years do we have almost a forty-five percent increase in out-of-school suspensions for elemen, out-of-school suspensions for elementary-age children? Something is wildly wrong. And burying it in an appendix, in a, in a table where the total line is mushed in with the, with the subtotal, with the subgroups of school levels is not effective presentation of information. And I'm sorry, but I, I, I have been hammering this issue quarter after quarter, season after season, year after year. This is why. This starts to get down to the nitty-gritty of what the heck is going on. And I'll tell you what, you start to pull it apart, and Dr. Braybrand, you did a little, like, you know, waving the warning flag in the back of my head, which is which principals, what schools? What are the risk factors? Are the principals who've been in a school for a very long time? I don't know. Is it certain regions? I don't know. Is it certain populations? I don't know. Are certain populations in elementary school more at risk? Or does it even out in high school? I don't know. But we can't solve a problem that we don't understand in a more nuanced way. This is the equivalent of the, the work that Mark Greenfelder is doing, you know, on the grades. This needs to be done on discipline. This is how you start to understand where's the problem really? It might not be a problem. We actually may be a gold standard in a vast majority of the places. There may just be a few places that are very strange, that we have outliers, that we're jacking little kids for out-of-school suspensions. But this is how you start to help us, is by giving us relevant data that is palpable, a palpable understanding of where the problem is. So that's, this is why I harp on data. I'm sorry that I'm, you know, adding charts. But this, when I talk to my colleagues about data and data and context, this, we need to know this. We have to know and understand this so we make better policy. But we have to demand these kind of answers. And you have to understand where the problem is so you can start leading, you know, the organization to do what you think is effective to abate this.
Let me just say again, this was a three-part look, and the question on the table was the hearing officer. So the truth is, I look back on this. We had the debate. Scott, should I put all this other data in here? You know what I decided? I said yes because the board needs to see it for transparency, even if we don't have all the answers. So I just want to say that to you and to all of you as a board. I could have waited, held it, held it, and waited to bring, here's the problem, and here's our solution. I still think transparency matters to this board as it works with me and this team. And I just keep that in mind going forward. Yeah, look, we saw the data. We were concerned. I asked questions. We didn't have all the answers. Should we share it? Should we not? I said, you know what? Put it in the appendices. We debated whether the board would go straight to that as opposed to the other pieces. I still think it's the right thing to do that we share this with you. But, you know, I guess that's just the thing. We set this up as a three-part piece, and this is the first part. And we'll, we'll have more information and more detail, and we'll have a proactive plan. I mean, we're not bringing this to you to say, this is it. No hearing officer, and that's all we're doing. So look forward to, look forward to future meetings on the topic.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, and thank you for providing the detailed data. I think all of us were looking to have this data, and there, we all understand that there's a lot more coming. With that, I am going to Ms. Keys-Gamara for her go-back, and then it will be Ms. McLaughlin and Mr. Moon.
So my, my purpose in making these statements is so that we can have a clear expectation, okay? And so as we're going forward, I would love to see a plan for schools where we do find these kinds of problems that Ms. Schultz just showed us. And I think that that's part of the problem is that we're just kind of, we're just, I, I, maybe I'm wrong, but I, it, I don't think we have a plan right now. Somebody made a comment, oh, it was Karen, about reports and a doctor, tell me your name again, I'm sorry. Yeah, you say it, yeah, you say it for me. Okay, so with respect to report. Yeah, I know, I know, I'm sorry. No, right, thank you. And dinner's, dinner's late. No, no, it's not really late, but I haven't eaten. But in any case, with respect to reports, I'm trying to stay focused. People don't, don't laugh, okay? With respect to reports, this is a systemic issue. And, you know, at large, it's need to get those reports as well. So I just want to make a, make a point that, you know, every, every district is represented by four folks. So we really need to get those reports as well. The other thing that I think we may need to really think about, because I think someone said it, I, I don't recall who, about a child being disciplined can really be a frightening thing for that family. So we may, one of the things that we outline and develop may be how we deal with families in these situations. I don't know if it involves videos or maybe a particular contact and, you know, but it has to be more than, you know, hey, we give you this contact, you're going to talk to Ms. Benedicto, and she's going to usher you through the process of your child being removed from the school. I would love to see some preventative steps so that parents who are starting to see some problems at home might have some resources available to them. And I know that we have lots of resources, but I'm not sure the parents actually, the parents who need to know, know about those resources.
So now, Ms. McLaughlin?
So, Dr. Braybrand, I'm very glad that you provided that additional response because I, I want to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page. Without question, this has been so incredible, the amount of raw, I'm going to use the word raw, data that's in here. And I do believe without question, it is beneficial not just to the board, but to you, that this raw data was here. Because what I hope you're hearing, and I hope it's beneficial to staff, is there are statements that are being made in here that as board members, it's not just that you didn't get a chance to do the data analysis. The statements being made to the data that's here aren't really capturing what the problem is. And so if it had just been raw data, no statements, it probably would have been safer. Because when we read things like on Appendix E two, where staff chose to say FCPS was typically lower than other school divisions in Virginia in terms of suspension rates. And then it goes into a few more sentences kind of saying the same thing. But for board members, what we end up looking at is, huh, curiously, Arlington and Loudoun are fifty percent lower in their disproportionality in the subgroups. Fifty percent lower. Now, ours are really nicely lower compared to the Commonwealth of Virginia. But I know that we take a lot of pride in saying, thankfully, Fairfax County Schools doesn't reflect the Commonwealth of Virginia's out-of-school suspension rates because those have been abysmal and considered some of the worst in the country. So it's kind of, I, I hope, Dr. Braybrand, what you're understanding is that what we're trying to bring in today's very lengthy work session on this particular subject is going into Phase Two, if we didn't have a chance to give you all feedback tonight on this Phase One, you might have come to Phase Two and really been sort of blindsided on, well, we didn't know this is how you were viewing the data, what you were looking for, what your expectations were. So I'm hoping this will prevent Phase Two from being, wow, we're on totally different wavelengths. So the second point I wanted to reinforce is, before I even joined this board, the advocacy group looking at disproportionality in student discipline had run it by high school. And it was alarming to see which high schools had really high out-of-school suspension rates or just discipline referral rates compared to other Fairfax County high schools. And I really look forward to our next Phase Two where we're going to have to really have some painful conversations about how dramatically different it is for our out-of-school suspension rates at some of our high schools, where if you look at poverty rates of those high schools compared to our other high schools, you, you could almost like say, let's run a chart on highest poverty rate on down. Let's run a chart on highest out-of-school suspensions and referrals to discipline on down. And they would look a lot alike. So then the question becomes, okay, what more can it tell us about what's happening deeper than? Because I don't, I don't want to draw any conclusions about what's happening in an individual school because discipline can be complex, and so many things can affect a student's behavior. But, but we have to have those, those deeper looks because as a district, you can look at some of our schools, and I'll go ahead and pull out Mr. Hood's, Ms. Riley's, my son's high schools, at Woods', I mean, really, really low out-of-school suspension rates, very low referrals to the hearings office. And then there's other schools where it is like five to eight, you know, six times the number of referrals happening at, at other schools. So that's again, just where I hope tonight's conversation is exhausting as managed, imagine it's been for you and staff, is maybe this is at least helping you guys understand where our focal points are going to be. Because this is, this is important work. And yes, we can say it affects so few of our students overall. But in the general stance, we know that anytime you get a kid disciplined involved, it, it can potentially derail them all the way through the career. And we are talking about thousands of kids every year that are going to get affected just in our school division alone. So I just wanted to emphasize that.
Mr. Moon?
I'm either last one.
You're the last one. Then we're going to go to next steps. And no, we're not going to go that long. And we are going to vote.
I will talk for half an hour then.
Oh, go for it.
Just kidding. As the, as the last, last board member to speak on steps of presentation in tonight's discussion, I want to thank Superintendent and the rest of the staff members being, first of all, being here today and enduring us for the last three hours that, you know, providing us with a lot of information including raw data. You probably have heard from at least several of us in wanting to know more about the data and, and, and reasons behind, you know, certain numbers. And I, I joined them in making the same request when I know why there was a certain, you know, huge hike in the number of suspensions for, you know, elementary and middle school from one year to next year. And I really want to know whether, 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 was a change in our practices, in our, in our SR and R, or, or just sudden change in behaviors on the part of our students, or there have been a reporting requirement change from BDOE? I just want to know. It's, it's good to know. And that is why I am looking forward to your Phase Two. And for my colleagues' benefit and for public, I want to read what the Phase Two that I'm expecting to get out from. It says, based upon your report, Phase Two, January two thousand nineteen, presents OLSI's plan for conducting an internal study and external review of discipline FCPS, including in-depth analysis of disproportionality. The study plan will outline an investigation of FCPS's implemented discipline practices, school climate, detailed data on discipline infractions and consequences, including out-of-school suspensions and referrals, as well as the relation between these factors to examine why trends exist. The design of OLSI's study and the external review target address. The design of OLSI's study and the external review target address, addressing what FCPS can do to address behavioral-related concerns. I think that this is exactly what the board members have asked to get, and that's what you're planning on doing. So I guess you must have known what we would be thinking. So thank you. Thank you. I want to thank all of you.
So Ms. Strauss, you can have the last word on this point, and then we are going to go to next steps and vote on the recommendation.
I just, since we've all been looking at the charts again, on D4, page D10, it actually shows, just make sure I'm looking at the right thing, it says number of hearings office referrals by pyramid, so it's not percent, it's numbers. And I just want, in 1718, I'm looking at elementary, and I just want to make sure that the numbers that I'm seeing in that list, at the elementary level, if those are numbers. Okay? Because the numbers range from zero to four. D10, this is numbers for elementary. So in year 1718, per pyramid, for example, the highest elementary referral in a pyramid from an elementary, group of elementary schools, is four in total.
Hearings, referrals to the hearing officer.
To the hearings office, right. This is not suspended, in other words, and this would be more, I just wanted, you know, in perspective, these would be more serious, challenging situations. Okay? And this is different than obviously suspensions or other things.
Correct.
Yes. Yes, I know, I know. But I just wanted to make sure that I had this table, I was understanding it.
That's correct.
Thank you. That's fine.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Could we put up next steps? Ms. Heinz?
I think so. I suspect that some of my questions are also going to be answered once you take a look at the ACLU email. So if you'd probably just fold that into a later one, which says, number six, review recommendations.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm sorry.
We were supposed to say ACLU, Fairfax.
Yeah, okay. So let's get rid of mine, number one, and then we'll just fold, when we get to Ms. McLaughlin's, I'll check in that, okay?
Ms. Schultz? So can people support that one? Number one, I think we have support. Include percentage and raw numbers in the appendices is...
So my question would be just what Mariana asked, are the expectations of this is in the final report? Because a lot of this analysis and the data will be completed with the final report.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, as a course of what you're doing, I think you need to be looking at data by And include the percentages and raw numbers. And can you also write totals, percentages, raw numbers, and totals in appendices? Anytime you do a table, give us the totals.
Ms. Schultz, would you accept a friendly amendment that's track discipline data by month and by school? And if it's a minimal number...
Well, I assume they already have it by school.
No, but by month at each school is what I'm saying.
How about disaggregated?
We, we do have data that we're looking at by school, and it is a very long report.
Yeah, that would be huge.
700 pages, something crazy.
Oh, okay.
And, and just keeping him currently 800 pages.
Actually, I would rather say by month and by level, so that we understand. I, I think it's more important to understand what's happening at elementary, middle, and high.
Sure.
I mean, if there's a particular dive down, you're going to be able to see those numbers. You're going to, you're going to go find the individual cases, but the overall needs to be the trend.
So again, everybody support that?
Yep.
Okay? And I think the second one is parallel or complements that. Everybody support it?
Yeah.
Number three, is that what you're looking for, Ms. McLaughlin?
I just want to be a little more clear, because it's not reflected in there. So, and first of all, it doesn't need to be the January work session. I think Dr. Duran said that when you come do the SRNR review with us, that if they could have that, that crosswalk examination of Arlington and Montgomery County Public Schools diversion, alcohol drug diversion programs within their SRNRs. I think you guys know what we're talking about with the second chance and so. So Madam Clerk, I do want to make sure though, just for the public to understand, we're talking about examining Arlington and Montgomery Counties, school districts approaches to, so after approaches, yeah, to alcohol and drug offenses. Well, Ms., yeah, Ms. Heinz, what I had said is, the reason why I don't want this as part of the final report is because that's in June, and if we were going to change any of our practices for the fall for SRNR, then, so what Dr. Duran had said is, as part of their report work, they could bring some recommendations earlier for SRNR changes. Okay?
All those who can support? Okay? Ms. Schultz? No, I'm asking about the next one, number four. What are you trying to accomplish there?
Number four.
I think what you're looking at is, what is the impact of our discipline decisions, is what you were looking for?
Oh, yeah, so that would be a...
Appeal cases. It's our, it's our...
Hearings office appeal cases, right?
But it's both on the hearing, it's based on their decisions and our decisions, a, a follow-up on, okay, I see, follow-up on the out, on, on the outcome based on board and hearings office decisions, or decision, or, yeah.
You mean student outcomes?
Yeah, I wonder what you're looking for. Are you saying like, do they re-offend, or do they...
Do they, do they re-offend?
Do they, do they graduate on time?
Are the 888, because the kids that you've trans, involuntarily transferred, winding up having more issues than the kids that we left in play? I mean...
But, yeah, no, so how do we track these kids? And I remember doing that when we had the SOS program, Support and Suspension Program for the grant, we had to try to follow and see what, it's hard to do, because then you end up with confidentiality issues sometimes, if I'm not...
This, I would imagine that this would be a closed session.
Yeah.
I, I would anticipate this would be closed session, so that we understand, because we may find out that, for example, if we overturn Superintendent decisions and the outcomes are not great, we may need to rethink it.
Rethink it.
Or the ones that we're not overturning don't turn out great, we might end up overturning a lot more. But we don't know, because we never, there's never the Paul Harvey...
Forensic review.
I would call it the Paul Harvey rest of the story, if anybody...
Follow, follow-up of board or effectiveness.
This is, this is like final...
For how long this past, this current year?
What's your data set?
I, I wouldn't go any more than last year. I think it would be too hard, because people will have graduated, I mean, at most, you know. I mean, on a rolling forward basis, I hope we, we can collect more information, but I don't expect you to go back before last year.
All those who can support this? Okay, great. The next one, Ms. McLaughlin?
Oh, yeah, so this was to review entire recommendations of the ACLU Fairfax.
Right, so which we are happy to do. My, my ask of you is, could we do this in conjunction, because we're not that far out from looking at our SRNR recommendations? Is this something we could bring back at the time that we discuss changes to the SRNR? Because we absolutely will take it back and talk to Division Counsel mid-April, early April?
I think that timeframe's fine, as long as it's, it's before anything would affect our SRO, MOU for the upcoming year as well.
Absolutely.
Yep, okay.
Those that can support that? Okay?
Okay, I don't like how it's listed. It would be include why we can or cannot implement, because we might be able to.
Correct. Okay. I think we all support that. Six, another one of yours?
I mean, I, I'm trying to see which, oh, OG was about our best practices. I was just saying that we need more in-depth information that relates to what is the research and best practice. Like if you read, you know, Appendix G, it's kind of a summary, but it's not really detailed. So I just want to make sure from setting, and it might be, again, that, Leedy, it's, it might be just part of your plan, so that, because it would be really the final report.
That's what I was going to ask. Not in January, it'd be the final report, right?
Right.
Phase Three?
Yeah, in June, right.
And you just, you just want more expanded information about what the research-based strategies are and how it kind of relates to FCPS and what's happening here, is that...
Correct. But I would also like to say that when you're citing best practice, one of the things I was saying is, based on what? Like, is it, you know, do we find school divisions that had found that they, their practices were working and were reducing, like Colorado and Massachusetts, I think, are known for that. But I, I just don't want something so high-level that we don't even know where we're drawing it from, because someone could frankly look to us, because they're so awful, and they cite us and say, hey, look, that's a best practice, do what Fairfax County's doing, and we're trying to actually get better. So I want to know...
Of course, of course, we are...
I want to know who we're...
You want to know the what and where we got the evidence from?
Thank you.
Those that can support that? Okay. Ms. McLaughlin?
Bob Birmingham, Judge Carr, Gail Carr. I mean, I'm not saying conducted by that, I'm saying consult with.
Consultation.
In consultation with.
So it's our understanding, the hearing officers have already received the restorative justice training, and it's been the last couple of years.
Okay, it's not working, so what...
Well, I'm sorry, it's not. So that's troubling to me, if that's, whatever training they've been given is what we're going to...
We need a refresher.
So the, the next piece of this, and I, I'm not sure it was going to go into Brabran briefing or somewhere, that in one of our committee meetings with the judge and, and the courts, we will be having conversations about what training they might advise that we provide to our hearings office, as well as to any other school staff.
That's exactly what I was hoping for. That's, that's why I said the in-consultation with, so, because we need to get better.
And Ms. McLaughlin, mine is not up there, but providing that same training to our administrative staff at schools, and so you might want to add hearings office and school-based administrators, because they're the ones who are doing the referring in the first place.
You know, but I'm sure that...
Yes, sir.
I'm sure that those individuals will provide, you know, if needed, a pro bono services. But having said that, I feel uncomfortable just designating particular person or people, you know, to provide us a training with.
Sure, well, no, I was just saying in consultation with, but we could say in consultation with the court, Fairfax County court system.
JDRDC, yeah.
Yeah, JDRDC, and then they know.
I, I'm already feeling better.
Good, good, good.
All those that can support that? Excellent. The next one's mine, add links to the relevant documents. This really is to just make the usefulness of the SRNR that much more powerful. Include in the proposed budget, money for the tiered systems of support.
Placeholder, right.
Yeah. I'm looking for a placeholder.
Yep.
Who can support that?
Yep.
Okay? Provide legal definition. Do you want to...
Yeah, what I'd just like to say about that is, at the, the last part of it, it says how many FCPS students were arrested. I think we want to make it maybe a little larger than that. Charged, were charged for disorderly conduct, and it doesn't have to say from the schools, I don't think. We just want to know how many were charged with disorderly conduct. However, it was eventually...
But you want behavior that was at school, not behavior in the community.
How about both? Only because. Only because. And I, I don't know if it's that relevant, but I'm thinking if we're not helping a kid deal with disruption, defiance, disrespect, disorderly behavior in school, maybe that's carrying out into the community. I don't know.
Just asking, if, if anybody could, you know, answer my question, whether police officer, if they arrest, charged for disorderly conduct in the community, whether they would break down by which school, I mean, that's, whether they, with that kind of data.
As, as it was, it was somewhat difficult for us to get, because, because what they'll have is where they were charged. So they could have been all the way across the county when they got engaged in that behavior, and, and it will show up in that, like that zip code, as opposed to where they went to school. What, what we, again, it will just have to see what they have. So there's a process, right? There's a complaint filed, and then a petition, that's different. And because of all of the accountability program we've been doing with RJ, a lot of times, it's not even getting to intake, because the police officer is diverting before, particularly with these disruptive kind of behaviors, a lot of those are going to RJ at this point. So, and it's going to RJ at the school level, if it was a school offense, it's going out in the community to RJ, if it was a community offense.
Right, so what you're saying then is that a police officer could charge a kid with disorderly conduct, but then divert it to restorative justice at school?
The way we have, the way we have set it up is they don't even file the charge, they just send them to restorative justice, so there is no record at intake that they were charged.
Gotcha. So I guess what I'm...
To try to alleviate that record.
Right. The data we can get is who was actually charged, right? Which FCP, or how many FCPS students in the last, how many years, two, three years, can we get?
We'll see what they have, yeah.
Trend data? Okay. All right, thank you.
And you want that included in the final report? Is that what you're asking?
That's okay with me, I think, final report. Yeah. Thank you.
So Ms. Keys-Gamara, you have some that didn't make it up there?
They don't, I don't see any of mine up there, actually. I'm sorry, I could have tried to type them out. The first one had to do with, and I can summarize it, and if you want me to type it later, I can just run it by you guys, and that way I don't have to hold everybody up. But the first one had to do with looking at current programs for, to try to reduce discipline cases in school. It's my understanding that we've made quite a bit of an investment in, in trying to reduce discipline cases, and I'd like to know what those are and kind of get some idea of...
Programs, interventions, all the variety of things that we've done, okay?
Right, things that we've already done, and, and some, you know, your best judgment on whether those things have been effective or not, because I think if we start talking about spending $100,000, which isn't an excessive amount, but we want to certainly look to see where the money is best spent, right? So that was the first one. The second thing I have had to do with professional development that has been done, and for whom, with respect to restorative justice and reducing those cases. The, the other thing had to do with how we, what efforts we have made, oh, do you need me to slow down? Okay. The efforts we have made to kind, to join, integrate our efforts with the court services and how that compares, because it seems that they have much more extensive services available, as opposed to, just based on my knowledge, I could be wrong, but looking at those two things. I didn't, I don't mean that, that came out wrong. I'd just like to compare what the court has to offer, and, and how we might be able to integrate our efforts with the court. Okay?
Can I suggest instead of integrate, to complement the court's efforts? Can I suggest, instead of integrate, to complement the court's efforts? Because I don't think we want to integrate, because we don't necessarily want to refer our kids to the court system.
Complement, no, we don't want to.
To complement would be better, yeah.
Probably better, okay? And then I, I think I asked about what possible interventions we could have with respect to having red flags for things like absences and, and other indicators of a problem developing, as opposed to only responding when the child is ready to be referred for discipline.
I had one, and I passed it in a note sideways, but I just wanted to let everybody know. When we have PDFs of documents, you have the ability to embed a table so that the data can be copied, so that the reader can access it, as opposed to it being a PNG image. I, I don't think that that's particularly transparent, so I think putting the table in, so that the, that it may be copied, is, I think, just, I think it's more accountable or more transparent, as opposed to just embedding images.
So the last thing I, I think I mentioned was, perhaps having some way of notifying the board, with, when you guys have implemented interventions, and that's what we aren't receiving necessarily right now, what interventions have taken place, consider that as a possible system? So we know what we've done. Thank you, please help me. Thank you.
So before we vote on yours, I know Ms. McLaughlin has to leave, and we do need to have a vote on the recommendation of putting the hundred thousand dollars as a placeholder until June. Can I have a show of hands of who would support that? That passes unanimously, so we can go back.
I also support all of Ms. Karen Keys-Gimara.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I do have one additional, which is, and it is somewhat of what you have in item 17, and it's what I had asked about, the intentional supports between now and June to address the concerns of those areas that are standard, more than a standard deviation, those schools that have more than a standard deviation difference in their discipline data, that the...
What's the standard?
It's, if you look at D, I'm sorry, I packed it up. This was the D, in section D, there's a data, there's a chart, I think it's D4, that shows where the standard deviation between what the district-level discipline data is versus an individual elementary schools, middle and high, and they seem to be concentrated in a couple of areas. So if we can get a fuller briefing as to what we're doing to address those concerns, I know that the two school board members that represent Region Three, and I believe the at-larges would be interested, and I would expect that the whole board would be interested in it.
I'm sorry, I just want to understand this before I vote on it, because I, I don't, what's the, because I know what a standard is in terms of achievement, I don't know what a standard is in terms of discipline, because I would...
Your deviation from...
So mathematically, off the median, off the mode, off the average?
It's off the, it looks at the variation, and it's off the average, so it's far above what the typical other pyramids were like.
So is it the, but is it the standard deviation off the pyramid or off the school?
It's off the pyramid at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. And if you, and if you look at the Appendix D, there is one chart that clearly has shaded those schools that, or those pyramids, where they are greater than a standard deviation from the average of discipline for the district.
Okay, I see the, I see the footnote. I just, I just caution, I feel like this may mask what you're asking. Actually, I feel like, honestly, I feel like the table D1 on page, I don't know what, D4, I actually, I actually think this is not deep enough a dive, because I don't know i, if, if there's a group, if there's a group of elementary schools, and they're grouped by pyramid, and it's really one school that's throwing them off, by, by norming it up to the pyramid, you may not find out where the problem is.
But that's why what I'm asking for is the intentionality in which they're approaching it. I want to have a report or a discussion about how they're actually addressing the concerns in that area, which they may come back and say, well, we looked at it, and it's actually one school, and this is what we're doing. Or they may come back and say, well, actually, it's a cluster of schools, and we need to address it. But that's why I'm asking for that deeper look.
I want to ask, does the question that you asked to you equal what she just said? What, yes. What I would say is that the, these schools that we have that are, or the pyramids that are showing up here on D4 are pyramids that have schools in them that we have identified as needing support. So we have been looking at the school level to see which schools need support. These pyramids that are highlighted here have schools in them that we have identified. I'm just going to, I'm going to be Ms. Heinz's advocate, so this is why I don't understand this. So for example, I am, I am. So in the South Lakes Pyramid, it's showing that there's an elementary 2.5, 3.7, and 4.5 for, for the elementary, and the division is only 2239 and 41. So I don't know how that knocks it into, like, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how you get to that, and that it wouldn't be more inclusive. So I'm happy to have this with greater... Right. What I'm saying is that the South Lakes Pyramid elementary schools collectively have a higher level, but in terms of our looking at support, we're looking at each of the schools individually, and planning support for those that need it, and not those who don't need it, even if they're in the South Lakes Pyramid.
That's precisely what I'm asking for.
I know, I just don't understand, in that regard, why only the elementary schools would be shaded, and not the middle and high that are 3341 and 36. Like, I would, if I, if I were Ms. Heinz, I would say I would want my middle and high school looked at as well, not just the, I'm just...
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
I appreciate, yes, Mr. Moon? Can we take a vote?
Okay, could they, could they just vote and move on?
Yes.
And just try, one of the courteous to our board members' request?
I would prefer, I would appreciate support on this. No, okay, great. So with that, I believe we are done, and thank you for all of your patience and robust conversations.